Welcome, everyone. I call the May the 4th, 2021 Bothell Regular City Council Meeting to order. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings is still in effect, therefore this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign-up sheets were provided by the City Clerk's Office via links in the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so it's not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our phone callers, during the staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to call roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember McAuliffe? I think you're on mute.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Dewar?
Here.
And Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
All council present this evening. Thanks.
Thank you. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some of our meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. For our council members, if you wish to speak, please indicate by holding up the little yellow card in the lower portion of your screen body if you're using a background so it doesn't disappear. And for our first item, we have meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. Virtual Spring Cleaning Workshop. Learn how to choose safer cleaning products and dispose of old ones, old products, or unneeded products. May 12th, 7:00 PM. Details at both the WA.gov has waste. And then we have Sonia Lang, Virtual Art Gallery, Lions and Tigers and Bears, oh my. Join the Arts Commission for a special gallery of photographer Sonia Lang's beautiful zoo collection. Find it on Bothell Parks and Recreation Facebook and Instagram. All right, for our next item we have, we have King County Council Chair Claudia Balducci here. And I guess a second hat that she's wearing and now is president of the PSRC. So another opportunity to lead our region. So thank you for being here and we will start the slideshow and turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and council members. I really appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes here on your agenda. I do like to visit the cities that I represent in District 6 for King County at least once a year and give a brief report. And so that's what I'm intending to do tonight. It's got two parts. One is looking back, the other one's looking forward. It took us a while to get this scheduled, so some of it's a little old and I apologize for that, but I'm also able to answer any questions that you have for me. I will say that one of the fun things about this presentation is that if you follow along from the pictures from the first slide until you get back to looking at me live, it's kind of a little COVID timeline of my hair. So enjoy that. All right, next slide, please. So in 2020, King County spent an awful lot of time, as you did, dealing with the COVID response. And we moved to remote work very quickly in March and stayed there and still are acting remotely as you are. And so because King County has public health in our services, we put an awful lot of our energy into responding to public health. And what you see in the picture there behind us is one of the large tent sites that we set up. We purchased facilities, we rented facilities, we erected facilities, all to help with keeping people separated. This particular one is in East Gate in Bellevue. It was never operated because we stood up hundreds and hundreds of units of isolation and separation housing in case they were necessary, because at the beginning, you'll recall, we didn't know how bad this was going to get. But we also just did a lot of budgeting. We had a lot of federal funds that came to King County, over $300 million at the end of the day. And 2/3 of that went directly to public health responses like isolation and quarantine facilities, like testing, like contact tracing, all that sort of public health work. We also were able to put some funding in three different tranches through to childcare to try to initially help essential workers continue to work, then to try to prop up the childcare industry because we know that there's not enough childcare slots in our county to begin with, and COVID meant that there were even fewer. And finally, we ended up just again trying to put some money into families being able to access childcare when they needed to continue working. I've already talked a little bit about shelters. We did a fair amount of sheltering because in an epidemic, our normal means of congregate shelter, which are larger spaces with people on cots or bunks or on mats on the floor, that's not appropriate when you have people who have a communicable disease. So we opened up a number of single-room occupancy type shelters in hotels and motels mostly. And we found that those worked really, really well, and I'll talk about that in a minute, from a perspective of keeping people from having major outbreaks and also just behavioral health management. We were also able to provide some support to particularly hard-hit sectors of the economy like arts, culture, and science organizations, small businesses, and a large number of community organizations, including LifeSpring, Hope, Link, and then cultural organizations like the India Association of Western Washington, which has since renamed to India Association Community Services, and Muslim Community Resource Center, and those are the ones that were on the east side. We also, after doing, ah, gosh, I'm going to get the numbers wrong, but we did eight budgets last year. And one of them was our biennial budget, and that is that we passed that in November. It's a $12.59 billion biennial budget because we have a very large county. The majority of it is for services like wastewater, solid waste, sheriff's deputies, transit. But we also included some proposals about reforming the criminal legal system. As I know you all will have seen, we are in the middle of the largest civil rights movement in our lifetime. And King County is looking very closely at how we can reform how we do certain aspects of our business in order to right historic wrongs against Black, Indigenous, and people of color in our community. So we budgeted a significant amount of resources to create restorative community pathways, which is a program to refer up to 600 young people to community-based organizations near where they live as opposed to the court system. We're still standing that program up, but the idea is to stop the recidivism and school-to-prison pipeline that we see when youth pass through criminal system. It'll also include restitution for victims, which is a key part of, you know, this sort of restorative approach. There's also money for an adult program that is similar, doesn't have a name yet, is not as far along in planning, but is meant to divert around 1,000 additional people. We are obviously continuing to fund vital transit services. We learned during COVID that some people will use the bus no matter what's going on in the world because they rely on it and they have to get to work and their jobs are essential. So we're continuing to fund those services regardless of the fact that our fares are way down and at points we're off entirely. I was proud to get into the budget, fund to expand youth Orca Card distribution when we start to build back up from COVID times and people feel safe being on the buses again. We want to be able to support youth in learning how to use the bus system and using it safely. Behavioral health was, took a big hit because behavioral health in King County is largely funded by sales tax. Our Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Fund was down several million dollars. I was able to put $2 million back as our, as our sales tax forecast increased, but we still have a problem in that there's a major demand for behavioral health has gone up due to the pandemic and our service availability has gone down. Thanks to the voters, our parks levy funds were pretty, stayed pretty robust. And they are dedicated to a variety of projects like the East Trail, which is the former Burlington Northern Santa Fe Rails to Trail project along the spine of the east side. And that's a very exciting project where you're going to see trail segments open starting in the next few months and continue opening throughout the next few years. And we're trying to get that entire 42-mile trail system open to the public. Just a really important thing to me, I know you all are on Lake Washington, but a lot of my district is on Lake Simamish. And our native little, little red fish, the Cokanee, is very close to extinction. And so I was able to put some money into some of the programs to continue to try to support them staying viable. And we also put money into housing stability, directly into housing stability programs because we know that one of the keys to ending homelessness is to keep people stable in their homes. It is the least painful thing that we can do, both from a personal trauma standpoint, if you can keep your home rather than going through losing it, and also from a cost standpoint, it's just the most cost-effective thing we can do. You may have heard, I just like to make sure that people are aware of something that we received from the state called the Puget Sound Taxpayer Accountability Account. And that's a terrible name with an even more terrible acronym. People like to call it PASTA. So the PASTA Fund is, that came to us by virtue of Sound Transit 3. When the legislature authorized the resources for the Sound Transit Board to use to pursue a new, the next investment in transit, they legislated a compromise around sales tax. So instead of paying sales tax, Sound Transit pays a sales tax-like fee on our construction, and it goes into an account that then must be appropriated by the state to the counties, and the counties have to use it for education. So this was an entirely new thing. We do not do education at King County or at any county, really. And so we had, we engaged for a couple of years in study and community outreach, working with experts, and came up with a plan to split our funds into three categories. The first is pre-K, where we're going to invest a significant amount of funding in early learning facilities because although state and local governments have put quite a bit into operation for early learning, they lack space. The second group will be in sort of K through 12, which is focused on BIPOC communities and bridging the, bridging the achievement gap. And then the third tranche will be from high school into the first two years of college, which we're going to call the King County Promise Program, very similar to other promise programs where there are both scholarships so that many young people will be able to go to the first two years of post-secondary free and also get the kind of supports through the latter years of high school and into college that help them to succeed and make the most out of that opportunity. And finally, something I'm, I'm super proud of, I had a number of advocates in the community come to me and ask what we could do to help cities do more for their own climate footprint, and that resulted in a funding and a planning of a climate action toolkit. It is now complete, has been adopted by the council, and is available for any city that wants to work on having their own climate plan, especially smaller cities that might have the resources or the expertise. It's kind of a way that you can walk through creating your own plan. Next slide, please. Now, looking ahead to the remainder of 2021, we are very engaged with, as a county, with vaccine distribution and COVID-19 recovery. We have just finally turned the corner from not enough vaccine doses to be able to vaccinate everybody who wants to having more appointments than we can fill. So the message I have for you all tonight is if you know people who need to get vaccinated and haven't done it yet, you don't even need appointments some places anymore. It's very easy to do and I encourage everyone to do it so that we can start to get back to normal. Our prevention and promotion levy, called Best Starts for Kids, is up for its first renewal. It's six years old this year. And we have voted a 19 cents property tax renewal levy to go to the ballot in August. That is out for, out for vote now. We just today approved our Strategic Climate Action Plan update. And it contains all of the things that we're doing, both internally for our own climate footprint as an agency, King County, and also our community work in partnership with the K4C and cities like Bothell to try to improve the community climate footprint. And it contains a focus on resilience to climate change because we know we're already experiencing that. A new program that you will possibly have read about, sales tax-funded Health Through Housing Program. This is a really big opportunity that the state gave to us that we decided to take advantage of, to take funding that we have not used previously to purchase distressed properties due to COVID and turn them into some more of those single-room occupancy type, type places that I talked about earlier. We just learned that there's a tremendous difference between giving somebody a door and giving them a mat on the floor. If you offer a person a safe place to be and some privacy and some dignity, the results are tremendous. And so we're really going to double down on that strategy and try to move up to 1,600 or 1,700 people off the streets in the next 18 months using this program. I continue to work very hard, many people do, in the affordable housing zone. There's a lot going on there from investments to policy to advocacy. I'm happy to talk about it more. This, this year, like any districted body, we have our redistricting plan. Bothell actually is one of the few places in the county where this could make a difference. You have two council members, as I'm sure you're aware. One of them, this one, represents two precincts in the entire city of Bothell. I'm going to guess that that was drawn that way so that you would have two council members. But it means that your line is right on the line. And so if you have an interest in maintaining a certain level of representation or doing it differently, I would highly recommend that you talk about it amongst yourselves and send your comments to the redistricting committee. We can help you connect with them. They are an independent body. We set them up, we watch them go, they make the decision. We don't have any input anymore as council members at this point, but happy to connect you, to share whatever the city's interests are in terms of where you come out on redistricting. I already talked about some of the law enforcement reform efforts that are in our budget. Also, last year, the voters voted on our every 10-year, most of our every 10-year charter amendments. They included amendments to improve oversight over law enforcement in King County, to change the sheriff's position from an elected position to an appointed position, and to allow an ordinance to determine some of the duties of the sheriff's office. And we're in the middle of a public outreach process and a committee review right now of what should we do with all that new charter authority? What should policing look like in King County? More to come. That's just kicking off, but there's a lot of focus and interest on that right now and where we end up. And finally, of course, transportation is always a big topic, something I work on a lot. I want to keep in touch with you all about what happens with our Sound Transit Capital Program. We're in the middle of discussing what used to be a big revenue hole, but as the time has gone on, it doesn't look so bad anymore. Now a big cost challenge, but I know how much effort and focus the city has put into making sure that our Bus Rapid Transit Program serves the city well. And so I want to just keep in touch with you about how we're doing that. My sense is that the 522 Bus Rapid Transit Corridor should move forward on schedule or if it, if it slips at all, it should be due to things within the project, not within the program of ST3. However, there's a big discussion going on at Sound Transit right now, and so I commit to keep you all informed along with Bothell Kenmore Mayor David Baker, who also represents this subarea on the Sound Transit Board. So that's it. That's my update. There's, there's lots going on at King County, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have. You can turn off the slides if you like so we can just talk to each other. Thank you very much, Robin.
Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Councilmember Balducci. I'm curious, so you mentioned 522 being probably on schedule, but you didn't mention 405.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering what you know. I fought very hard in session to get money to backfill the tolls and a little bit extra. And I'm just wondering when that decision will be made and what plays into it and what can we do to advocate for that to keep moving forward?
Yeah, so I want to thank you so much for your leadership and advocacy to push the state part of that project because it is, it is a sort of a joint project where Sound Transit is building some of it and the state is building some of it, especially the ETLs, the expanded toll lanes. And so we know that 405 South Lake is more or less on schedule. And I say more or less just because each individual project has got its own things, like there have been real delays in permitting and some of the activities that we need to do intergovernmentally that have nothing to do with our funding, but because of COVID, the schedules may slip a little bit. The funding issue could cause the schedules to slip more than a little bit. That's the issue that I'm concerned about. And so 405 South from Bellevue, southward seems to be good. Bellevue, Bellevue northward has got some challenges. For one thing, we don't know what the timing of the state building out of the ETLs is, and our buses are intended to run in those lanes. The cost challenges mean that building the big station at Kirkland 85th Street looks like a very expensive project, among other things. So this is a live debate right now. We are working on those plans. I don't recall when the next meeting is that the, where the board is going to discuss it, but we're supposed to make at least the next set of decisions in July. I'll tell you that I am advocating to keep 405 moving. This is my number one priority project in the, in ST3 at the moment because I think we should just keep building it. These were the early deliverables in ST3 that we promised to the voters, and I think we should deliver them because even though partial elements of it are expensive, by comparison to the light rail extensions, these are affordable. So we should be continuing to move these projects forward. But I don't, I won't have a really good answer for you for a few months here, but we're right in it. So now's a really good time to advocate with the board to make sure that we are keeping an eye on the commitments that we made here.
May I follow up, Mayor?
Yep.
So one of the things that I think is super important is when I was asking about postponement or delay for 405, it was $30 million for just inflation.
Yeah.
And, and I know I've seen several, several, in several places, I can't remember which reports, but that the BRT projects are the only ones that are seemingly on, in budget, within budget. So I just would advocate strongly, as you know, now that you're in the PSRC, I forget where the title is, but as you know,
President.
To keep our regional growth center.
Yep.
And we've got a bit of a fight on our hands in terms of the business park and their concerns about traffic. We know that businesses there would like to expand, but it's a challenge with, with things as they are. And obviously, having a bus barn up there that serves the south end of 405 but affects our traffic is a little bit on the untenable side for us.
Yeah.
And we know we're losing jobs in Canyon Park. Phillips, I think it was Phillips, just announced 80, 80 jobs or 90 jobs that are moving to Mexico. I can't help but think that, that there will be more loss if we do not fix our traffic issues up there. So supporting transit, to me, should be a high priority for that area. So I just thank you for any, anything you can do. And please, again, let us know if there's anything specific that we might do to support that effort. But thanks, thanks for making that your number one priority.
I will absolutely keep in touch with you all and let you know if there comes a time when it's really important to hear directly at the board from the council, that would be great. Yeah.
Super. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chair, thank you for coming and giving us some updates tonight. Councilmember Dewar took a couple of things I was going to ask, so I won't ask them again. But I was curious, the Health Through Housing Initiative and looking for that permanent supportive housing, is there any talk or are we even able to look at critical care beds in the north end as well? The reason I ask is the radar program that we have, that's kind of the choke point for it and the failure point. There's, I believe, 17 beds in King County and the closest one is in Kent that we can actually bring people to when our navigators engage somebody instead of the criminal justice system.
So tell me what you mean by critical care beds. I don't, I want to make sure I'm talking about the same thing.
When our navigators engage somebody who's having a mental health crisis, a place to take them to get care. Not necessarily a place where they need to live, but a place where they might need to spend a day or two and get care.
So inpatient psychiatric type beds?
More the like short term, not necessarily like, you know, interim, but like, hey, where, where can we take somebody when they are in crisis?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really big question. I, I'm still not 100% sure that I'm thinking of the same types of beds that you're talking about. But back in the day, I used to be, I worked in the jail system for many years, and this was a huge problem for us, letting people out of jail. We would have people who couldn't be released directly to the streets. They had a variety of different court orders and they might be, have been determined to be, you know, permanently incapacitated, like not, I'm not getting the right word, it's been a long day, permanently not capable of going to trial, but they need inpatient care. And the number of beds available for those kinds of folks, very, very small. Really, it's Western, it was Western State and Harborview and a few beds at a couple of other places. And I don't know that we have, as a state, licked that problem of inpatient type beds. Health Through Housing is based on a statutory revenue stream that came with strings. And the state strings talk about what the housing must be and what it can be. I, I don't know the answer to your question, but I will check and find out. My, my memory is telling me that it's mainly about homelessness housing and a permanent supportive housing, that it's not really meant to be specifically psychiatric housing. But let me, let me see if I can put those two things together and make sure that I've got the right question and the right answer.
All right. Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you for your work around East Trail and Transit. And we just echo Councilmember Dewar's, like, 405 BRT.
Yep. Thank you. I would talk more about some of the wonderful work that Councilmember McNeil did at the RPC, but I'm a little afraid that because the Best Starts for Kids measure is currently headed for the ballot that that might be considered campaigning, so I'm not going to do it here right now, but let me assure you that he did really wonderful work there.
Oh, Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to echo the work that, that you did as well. It's amazing to see how we can work together regionally on behalf of our entire region and folks can come together at the last minute, as you and several other county council members did, to put forward something that's going to be amazing for our entire region. So I want to thank you on behalf of our community for that, for that hard work and dedication that you, you guys put in for that. I had a question around the redistricting, 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 and what that, you know, Bothell spans two counties already. And so what, what could that potentially mean for us here, here in Bothell?
So the decennial census information comes out, and just today, we approved the Special Districting Master that will work with the, that will work with the redistricting committee. And these appointed volunteers will work with the experts and the resources we have given. And these appointed volunteers will work with the experts and the resources we have given them, and they will draw lines on maps. And the, the main legal standard they're trying to meet are communities of interest, that they're looking to keep together communities that have a common interest and not draw lines to try to manipulate, if you will. There's a reason, by the way, that Washington State doesn't have the gerrymandering problems that some other states do, and it's because our law makes these discussions very independent, not at all political. Like, when they draw the map, that is the map. We don't even get to vote on it at the county council. But, so it would be pretty easy for them to redraw the lines, meet the community of interest standard, and you have only one county council member. It's unlikely you'll get three. You could keep two, you could go down to one. And I just, if you care to have two, if that's a valuable thing to you, to have two King County council members and your Snohomish County council member, then you might want to weigh in with them and tell them why, tell them what your interests are, why it's, you know, if there's a north element to Bothell, and there's an east element to Bothell, and how you sort of line up in your, in your interests with other parts of the county. At Bellevue, we always, and when I was in the Bellevue City Council, we always had two council members. 90 is more or less the line, it zags a bit. But we were very focused on wanting to keep two council members, because we found it to be very valuable to have two people. It meant two different, two different sets of, of contacts, two different interests, two different people. Sometimes one of them wasn't super responsive and the other one was, you know, we liked having two. So we would advocate to keep the two. And if you, I just think because that line just barely, of District 6 barely cuts into Bothell, that you look like a district that might be very much on the line to have just one council member. I mean, I've got 10 cities in District 6. I could use nine, that would be fine, but I would miss you all. I'm just advocating that you, you should think about what your interests are, and then make sure the districting committee knows that and takes them into account.
Well, thank you for sharing that. And as I think you know, as I speak and I go out, I do represent the city of Bothell, but when I speak as a true Washingtonian, I actually represent Washington and our region. And I know, you know, no, nobody understands boundaries and lines. They can't see them, they're invisible, right? So when we go out and we have representation, representation should be representation as a whole. So thank you for clarifying that, and it does mean a lot to, I would speak for myself. It does mean a lot to, to understand who's representing us and that they're representing us as a whole, as a region. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I'll try to be really quick. Thank you very much, Councilmember Valducci, for coming. Lots of good stuff, and we've, and the county's been keeping you all very busy. Just, and also, I very much appreciated your, I'm going to just call it, you know, common sense approach to biggest bang for the buck on BRT. Makes total sense. I can't imagine why you wouldn't have a lot of support there. But just to build a little bit more on what Councilmember Thompson was talking about on our navigator, mental health professionals, professionals. I don't know if that includes people who are in real crisis and are going down to Seattle, but there are, I have a hunch it's for just milder cases where we don't, but we need to find a bed for someone, and having 17 beds, and I don't know if I can speak for all of council, but we've, we've chewed on this before, saying a regional facility. So if there's other cities up here that you hear rumblings where they're talking about that, yeah, Bothell would love to do something. It doesn't have to be in Bothell, although I'm sure, you know, Bothell would welcome one. But if there's other cities that are up here at the North End rumbling around wanting a similar thing, yeah, Bothell's on it. So that's all I wanted to say. 17 beds doesn't go very far.
Yeah, it doesn't. Sure doesn't.
And it's, yeah, and it's a long commute for somebody who's in crisis. You just want to get them in a comfortable, safe place as soon as possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will follow up on that. That, that's good additional information to help me follow up.
Councilmember Agnew.
First of all, I want to say your hair looks great.
Thank you. That's all I came to hear, really.
You know, to, to follow up on the navigator program, there are a number of hospitals that we have in this county that receive county funding, is there not?
You know, I, I, I mean, there's, we have our own hospital, right? We have Harborview.
Yeah, but if I'm not mistaken, don't, doesn't the county also give money regionally to Evergreen Hospital, to Valley General Hospital, to Auburn Hospital? And I was wondering if there's any way we could go, get around trying to dictate a place, but kind of get those facilities to step up to the plate a little bit.
Yeah, so I'm familiar with Evergreen and Valley. Those are public hospitals in their own right, and they have their own funding source, and we don't support them through King County government taxes. But us, as King County residents, support them, right? If you're in the district, you're getting it. So, but all, all good thoughts. And, yeah, this is a, this is a very gnarly problem, and I could share all kinds of crazy stories, but you don't have time for that. So let me take all that, see if I can get to the bottom of what the barrier is and what opportunities there may be to try to increase access and get back to you.
Well, thank you very much. And thanks.
Of course. Yeah.
Councilmember McColl.
Thank you, and I really appreciate your report. Particularly, I'm interested in, you talked about civil rights and restorative pathways, school-to-prison line. Those are the kind of things that I hope the county can do to kind of find some other answers than what we've had in the past. So my experience with school-to-prison pipeline is when kids went into, when they didn't attend school, then we kind of put them to courts, and then the court said, you have to go back to school. If you didn't, then they went toward the juvenile system. I, I hope that we don't do that anymore. I hope that we can change that route for our young people. So what are you doing kind of when it comes to restorative pathways? I guess I'd like you to talk about that a little bit.
Sure. Well, for one thing, I, I will say that that pathway to actually being in juvenile detention because of truancy is something that I don't believe we do at all anymore. And if it's even legal, there's nobody in it. So it used to be there was always a handful of kids in our juvenile detention facility who were there because of truancy reasons. They called it the BECA bill, right? And, and, and that went down to one or two, and it was very challenging, and it's, it's not the right thing. We, we know, data shows us that we, that, that when you put a young person into detention, their likelihood of returning and recidivating just goes up. And so the idea of cutting that off before we even get into that, it's, it reduces future crimes, it reduces future victimization. It's a win-win, really, if you can keep kids out of that system entirely. So we have a number of programs that have, some have existed for a very long time. Day reporting, work release, home detention, and newer ones, like the one we're talking about now, which will be a, a complete diversion. The, if the youth successfully completes, they don't have a criminal record at all, so it doesn't follow them in any way. And the, the really new thing is working with community-based organizations. So instead of probation and sort of court monitoring, the youth will be assigned to a specially trained, community-based organization, ideally in the community where they are, that will help them to not only deal with whatever is going on that caused them to be involved with the criminal legal system, but also just surround them with community care and success factors, because, you know, having caring adults is a, is a major success factor for youth. It's, the program is not fully designed yet, it's not ready to roll out, so I don't have a ton of really details. But we'll be putting out more as it, as it gets built out, and it's meant to launch, I think later, either late this year or early next.
And do you have a name for that? I know you, is it the Complete Diversion? Is that the name?
It's called Community Pathways, is the name of the program, but it is a type of program, is a diversion program, yes.
I'll follow it. I fought for 24 years to get rid of the truancy pipeline to prison, and
Thank you, Councilmember.
I am so glad we finally realized impacted that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming in after a long day and coming to speak and share everything that's, has happened and what's, what we can look forward to from King County. And, yeah, especially for the districting committee. I think that, you know, it's always great having more voices for our community. So, yeah, if you could provide that information for us to get in contact, that, that'd be great. I think just by the questions and the head nods, I think we have an interest on council for that. So, again, congratulations for presidency and even more work on your plate. But we appreciate you and all that you do for our community.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. I wish you a very successful rest of your meeting tonight. Thanks for your time. Take care.
All right. Let's see, we will head over into the development activity map and major projects updates. I saw we have Jeff Smith, our Development Services Manager, pop in here, and I believe we'll have a few others join him. But I will turn it over to you, Jeff, and let you start presenting, getting underway.
Thank you, Mayor Olson, and thank you to the council again for giving us this time and hearing about the things we're, we're working on. Development Project Review, many of you familiar with it in some sense, but it's a multidisciplinary and multi-departmental function of the city of Bothell. It involves staff from community development, public works, and Fire Marshal's Office. It is primarily focused around the review of private development projects, also includes some public ones, but mostly private development projects that are ongoing in the city. And it's a challenging endeavor, given all the moving parts that are involved. The city has its various teams of professionals that, that work in this field. Applicants have their teams of professionals that work in the fields, and then the community in general. And we all work together to achieve the best right outcome for the, that honors the, the interests of the community, as you guys have expressed in your plans and codes. Tonight, the council will hear from three of our staff members. Joan Sorensen will start us off tonight. Jones has local roots. He grew up here, he graduated from Bothell High School, and then went on to George Fox University, and eventually Portland State University, where he earned a master's degree in urban and regional planning. He's a returned Peace Corps volunteer. He has over 10 years of experience in the planning field, and five year, he's a five-year veteran here at the city of Bothell. Jones will be followed by Melinda Tanner. She is a certified permit technician. Melinda is our permit services supervisor, and she has over 20 years of experience in permitting and permit coordination here at the city of Bothell. After Melinda, David Swayze will, will talk us through some of the, the statistics and issues around building inspection, building permit inspections. Dave is a US Navy veteran, and he has 14 years of building services experience with the city of Bothell. Jones will head us off, and I believe he has his own screen. He'll share that. I'll mute my mic, and then we'll move on from there. So again, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Good evening, council. 10 to 15 years ago, council and the community requested a map of active development projects. Council and staff were receiving a lot of calls and inquiries, and community, community members were asking about that project down the street or near their neighborhood, really no different than today. But we don't use a paper map anymore showing these private developments at the city hall front counter. Staff in the GIS, or the Geographic Information System Team, Division of the Information Systems Group, have worked to transform our old physical paper map of these projects and created a publicly available, easy-to-use online map that we will view tonight. Map views are active right now, and the private development project map, over the past six months, has about 1,200 uses. Identified on the map are around 100 active projects, and this number has been consistent the last few years. So I want to say kudos to the GIS staff for creating this user-friendly tool that's available to all. Why am I presenting this? Our city planning team, with Jeff and Mike Cotterman, maintain a spreadsheet or the data of active development projects, and the GIS team then links to those to keep the map and projects up to date and current. With the private development map, we are able to show projects that are not just moving dirt or going vertical with a new building, but those that are coming to a neighborhood or will be there in a couple of years. It's really not just what's going on down the street, but what's going to happen, you know, and coming up. So I'm going to just click to the map from the city website and share the screen, show you the ease of getting there, and then just what kind of data and information we have. Excuse me. So here we are at bothellwada.gov, and I go to the left-hand side where we have the blue column and just a couple icons. I'm hovering over the maps icon and just click that. It takes us to a maps and GIS webpage where I scroll down and see city interactive maps here. Click on that. The city interactive maps has a ton of resources I'd encourage anybody to go to. And I just scroll down, I see city of Bothell, the public projects, and then private development projects. The last update that we'll look at here, January 2021, and it'll probably be updated soon, I'm guessing. So I click the hyperlink, and up pops our city boundaries and a bunch of dots. So these dots represent all of our active projects, whether in review, preliminary approval, or under construction. And we've got the four tabs in green at the top, where you can break the project phases and the project down into those in review, those that have preliminary approval, and those under construction. So I'll go back and just click on all projects. This includes single-family subdivisions, townhomes, apartments, multi-story projects in downtown, environmentally reviewed projects, commercial, new commercial buildings or industrial. So looking at these dots, we've got a bunch of green. And to give you an example of what you can find, I'll go over to North Creek and 120th Ave and click on one of the dots, and it happens to be Avalon Bothell Commons, a really large project. And you can get quickly information on what the status is, a description of the project, a permit coordinator to call, and a phone number. Preliminary approval, let's see, in review, I'll go downtown. And here's Sama Senior Apartments at Lot A. Says in review, gives a description, 52-unit senior housing project. We've got a permit contact and a phone number and a case number. And then just clicking on those under construction, I think we've got a big one out in the Fitzgerald area, and Montevallo is an 85 lot, single-family plat. And there's information there for community members or whoever to call and find out more, if they want to know more. So it's really been a great tool. So kudos to GIS team, the Development Services team, for collaborating and bringing this together and having it available to anybody and easy to use. Thank you.
All right, my, my dog had to leave the room. Quite bad. Okay, Melinda, you're going to go, and I'm bringing up your, hang on. The PowerPoint. Okay. Can you see that now?
Yep. Okay, thanks, Jeff, and thank you, Jones. So to expand on the development project map that Jones just showed you, here's a snapshot of our current permitting activity levels comparing numbers for 2018, 2019. levels comparing numbers for 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021 through May 1. On this first slide, we're showing all the, oops, can you go back one slide? Yeah. So the first slide here, we're showing all the permits that we issue, which includes everything. So it's building permits, like new construction, remodels, tenant improvements, fire sprinkler, fire alarm permits, grading, utility right-of-way, everything that we issue. Right now, we're about one-third through the year of 2021. So we still have two-thirds of the year left, and we're on track for 2019 numbers. Next slide. And then here, we're showing the building permits issued by year. We're on trend, it looks like, here as well for the 2019 numbers. And you can see that 2018 was a record year for building permit activity. Next slide. So here we have the number of new single-family construction permits, and 2018 was a record-breaking year that year as well. In 2021, you can see that we've issued more new single-family home permits than we did in the entire year for 2019 or 2020. Next slide. And then here we show the number of multifamily building permits issued by the number of units. 2018, again, was a record-breaking year, as you can see. And then this year, we're on track for probably more than 2019 or 2020. Right now, we have 19 new multifamily building permits in review with 907 units. That includes the review of Block D Avalon Ross Road Apartments. So as you can see, 907 units is a lot more than even 2018. Thank you. I'll turn over to Dave Swayze.
Thank you, Melinda. So I'm going to share some inspection numbers between 2018 and 2021. We thought these numbers would be important to you because they show the effect that COVID had on on construction and on inspections. As you can see here in the first slide, January through April, 2018 through 2021, we had a really big dip in 2020. In fact, in April, we only had 108 inspections, and you compare that to the month we just had, where we had 632 inspections. So you can, you can see we're coming back up to 2019 numbers, kind of echoing what Melinda explained. Next slide, please. And this is yearly totals between 2018 and 2021. Again, 2018 was a record year. We've never hit numbers in 2000, like we did in 2018 for inspections, for permits, and for plan review. It was a very, very busy year. And again, you can see the numbers, we are coming back up to 2019 numbers. And it's important to note that the numbers I'm showing you do not include those inspection numbers from the Fire Division and Public Works, who also do their own inspections. Thank you.
Thank you to my team. Thanks, Jones. Thanks, Melinda. And thanks, Dave. These are really outstanding, dedicated professionals and really do a great job for the city of Bothell. I want to remind you that as you see those maps and as you see those charts and things, those are real projects. Those are real in-the-ground projects where things are happening, dirt is being moved, as you can probably, you know, evidenced by your own drive around town, I suspect. But but there are just, there's just a lot of activity going on right now. We're very busy, and we enjoy very much taking care of this work for the city of Bothell. So with that, any questions? We'd be happy to answer them if you had them. Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions. I just wanted to say thank you for coming and giving us good news. Looks like things are on the rebound. And thank you for your hard work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Thompson. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Real quick, yes, thank you for the presentation. You know, we were all hunkered down for 2020, and it's nice to know, get the visual that life was still going on in our city despite despite COVID. And so I appreciate even though those numbers reflect a COVID impact, we were, we were, we were still plugging along. So a quick question. GIS, a little bit of application for you, and maybe then outside of it, all the things that it can do are pretty exciting. Is that, has there been any more talk in the city about expanding what goes in our GIS mapping at all? Like, are we including where utilities are, that kind of thing?
Yeah, the GIS Division, Darren Brown is the supervisor in the GIS Division, and they're very busy working, constantly working on upgrades to the kind of information that can be presented through this system. I believe he's going to be having a more specific presentation to you guys coming in the in the next few months. But there's a tremendous amount of data that is represented in the GIS mapping section that Jones kind of showed you how to get into. If you stop at the Cobb map tab that that he showed at the top of that page, that's kind of the general map, and that includes a ton of different layers of information that you can, you can, you can toggle on and off, and you can look at things like that. Now, again, Bothell's a pretty complex place, as you know, but for example, with utilities, we have our City of Bothell Utilities. And if you click that layer, you'll get, you'll get water pipes and all that sort of stuff. We also are served by Alderwood Water and Wastewater District and North Shore Utility District, and I think even a little bit of Woodinville Water District. So so not all of that data gets gets captured in the same slide because they're they're managed and controlled by different agencies. But I do encourage you, all the members of the council and members of the community, to go onto that website and to look at those mapping programs and and really play around with it. It's it's fun to click on and zoom in and the aerial photos we have and all of those kind of things. So there's a lot there. And and so I could, I won't go on much longer, but but just for sure, I encourage you to to experiment with that. You can't break it. Go ahead and click on it. And just see, see all the various information we have. We have a lot, for sure.
I appreciate it. I think I sat at an AWC conference that was just GIS-focused. That was back when we could meet in person, right? And it was just very exciting to see all the tools. And I did come home and play, play with what we had on our city website. But it sounds like it's time for me to go exploring again. Super user-friendly.
I really encourage it, Councilmembers Zornz. Thank you so much. Joe Sherman is the is the director in in the IS department, as you know, and Darren's division is within his purview. So you might want to get in touch with Joe, and maybe Darren can can help you look through some of the resources we have. It's really great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Dur.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff, Dave, and Melinda. Great presentation. It's always nice to kind of get a better idea of what people do for the city and in the city. So if we were to extrapolate the current numbers for 2021, it would appear that we're going to give 2018 a run for its money. Am I correct in that assessment, or guess?
I think, I think you would be, I don't think you're, you're anywhere off the mark on that. No, I think so. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Oh, sorry. I think for 2004, for this year, we could give the run, give 2018 a run for its money in inspections. I don't know about the other items. We, like I said, we had 632 for April of this year. We haven't seen a number in a single month like that since 2018. So it's a good indicator.
And then how does, so how does staffing work when the numbers are so high like that? Do you, how do you respond with the workload?
Dave, go ahead, Dave, if you want to. Yeah, that's a great question, and thank you very much for for asking it. It is a challenge. I mean, as you guys know, we had a, we had a contraction of the number of staff people in the city, and every department had a, took a hit a little bit during that time. Quite honestly, and quite bluntly, our really, our only management tool for this workload is time, if you think of it that way, right? I mean, we don't control the front door. Someone who wants to apply for a permit can walk in the front door and apply for a permit, and we process it. We take it in, we put it in our system, and we process it. Our really only management tool that we have that we control entirely is time. Now, that's, we don't have infinite amounts of time because because people want to build things and things need to get done. And once, of course, once they're in construction, it's it's a ball rolling downhill, right? You just, you can't just stop those things. So so we do use that tool carefully. We sort of flex that, how long will it take to you to get through our system and to get your permits and to get out the door and begin your project? That works to some extent, but there's definite limits to that. And and we're feeling, we're feeling at the top of our capacity. There's no question about it. Yeah.
Yeah, we're working with the director right now to to secure more assistance for inspections.
Because I was going to say, this is an area of the city which council has asked to, or allowed for it to pay for itself, right? And so we should be able to onboard people as as needed if there are people to be hired or out there available, right?
Yeah, for the most part. Michael Cotterman can probably get a little deeper in the weeds with you on that one in particular. But but as Dave pointed out, some of our functionality, we can get assistance from outside contractors and agencies and things like that. Some of it works, some of it doesn't. So we balance that kind of carefully. It's a, it's a delicate balancing act that I won't kid you, it really is. So but yeah, and maybe Mike can can talk to you guys a little bit more about where where it goes in terms of staffing and budget impacts, for sure.
Great. Well, appreciate all the work that you're, you've done and will be doing. It sounds like it's going to be a busy year for you. So thanks in advance.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. I just want to tell you, Jones, Melinda, and David, how impressed I am with moving from, you know, everything written down on paper into the GIS system. That's very exciting. And for our public, I was trying to keep track here, and I might have missed it. So if someone from the community said, well, where could I go to find these city interactive maps, active projects? Is the website private development projects within city of Bothell? Is that where they go? Or what, I guess I might ask you, what is the website they would visit?
Jones, you want to, you want to lead Councilmember McAuliffe in that?
Yeah, Councilmember McAuliffe, I would go to bothawa.gov. And then, oh, yeah, bothawa.gov. And on that left column that's blue, you can hit the maps link. But I also work with customers regularly, and I say, just go to Google, and let's type in "interactive maps Bothell," and it pops up as the first link, and you're going to have your options there.
Excellent. I have so many people that always want to know, what's happening with this property? What's happening with that one? So this is a really great tool for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, Jones, David, and Melinda, thank you for the presentation and information. I had a couple of questions around the software. Memory serves, we updated or changed something with the way we process permits or something. Is that correct? Am I, am I remembering that correctly?
Melinda can answer that question, I believe.
So we accept all of our permit applications online through mybuildingpermit.com. So maybe that's what you're remembering. So we basically, we are all online, and we've been all online for the whole COVID-19. So we're really lucky there. We have had everything online available probably a couple of years now.
Okay, so were we online in 2018?
Yep.
Okay. Was, was it rolled out in 2018 or just before?
Well, so basically, we've been on My Building Permit partially. It used to be, basically, in the first, the beginning, it was set up to be a online application portal for over-the-counter and single-family permits. Yep. And that was about 15 years ago at least. So and then land use got on there probably, I'm going to guess, about seven, eight years ago.
Okay. And now it's fully integrated, so all inspections are called in through that as as well now?
So inspections are actually through a different module. We have a permit system that has something called CSS that is with that system. And so we're using that system to schedule inspections.
Okay, fabulous. I was just curious, because I'm wondering if technology is helping to process things quicker, if if it can help to process things quicker, make things more efficient for you. We always, you know, if, does that make it revenue neutral, that we can have software inefficiencies there to to help get things done more efficient? Because as we talk about ways to create affordable housing, processes and timelines and things like that can help. So we always want to be thinking about that as we, as we look at these things. You, the map, the map is amazing. It's fabulous. I think it's just having that available for the community to be able to see the snapshot at a glance, what's going on, what's coming up, is amazing. If, is there, does that map show history of the past at all?
I don't, probably not in this, in the sense that you're thinking of it, I think, Councilmember McNeil. Jones, your sense of it, it doesn't, no. I mean, once, once they are truly occupied, you know, projects, they're finished, they're completely occupied, sold, whatever they're doing, and people live there, no, they would drop off that that map in particular. That's a, that's kind of a, we call it active projects map, right? Yeah.
Okay. It would, do you know of a way that if the history, somebody who's looking up the history of growth throughout Bothell could actually find that information? Is that something that the city would have? Or is there a place that one could find the archives of, you know, I guess, I guess what I'm, the reason, the, the reason I'm asking that question is because a lot of times people talk about how fast we're growing in one area versus another area. And it would be good for us to be able to educate them on the type of growth, you know, I mean, this map is amazing, but the type of growth and and where we've come from, right, to an extent. And I'm not saying we need to do that. I'm just saying it would be nice to be able to educate our community to some degree on the changes that are happening within the community. Because some people have, you know, they're, oh, you're putting thousands of units over here, and it might be, you know, 100 units, right? Or you're putting thousands of homes in that are, you know, $2 million, and it might be, you know, 20 homes. So it's just being able to inform the community of what's really happening. I think this map is is amazing. But the past history would would be something that would be kind of cool to have as well. But thank you again for the presentation. It was amazing.
You're welcome. Thank you. I will talk to Darren about that, because I am curious now you bring that up. I know that we have layers in that Cobb map. That's what the main, main program sheet, sheet is called. There are layers in there that show certainly historical aerial photographs that you can go back to and at least see where something suddenly appears, and then you get a sense of it that way. It's not going to be as much granular detail as we just showed you on the dots. But I'm curious, I'll ask Darren about that. That's a great question. Thank you.
Just to add one thing to that, Councilmember, one of the interactive maps on that webpage that Jones cited is the annexation history. So it doesn't show you projects as far as the development of the city that way, but it does show you in in order the the changes of the city boundary through the annexation process, which kind of gives you some idea of how the city has grown in that respect. But as far as historic project information, you know, we archive that for the most part, but it's on a project-by-project basis. We haven't really been tracking or or mapping through our GIS system, as far as I'm aware of that in the past. So we're kind of building that record now as we move forward.
Councilmember Agnew.
You know, I have no questions, Jeff, but I just wanted to thank you and Jones and Melinda and David for an excellent presentation that was very informative. Thank you very much, guys.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys. We appreciate your support, and we really like to get together with you and show you this stuff. Thanks.
Yeah, likewise. A great presentation by all four of you. I was especially intrigued by the the quick little tour we had of the active projects, just the three tabs that was on there. Very interesting to be able to, as you're driving through the city and as you're driving through the city and you kind of wonder, you know, some of them have their project boards up still. Um, but this way you can really dive into it and, and learn a little bit more and, and find out where and how you can find out more information. So I thought that was great. Uh, so yeah, thank you everyone.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, and we are on to our city manager recruitment survey for public, for the public and employees. Uh, and I see that we have our human resources director, Matt Pruitt, came in here. So take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share something with you really quickly. So, uh, the purpose of me being here this evening is to give you a short update on, uh, what we are doing to, uh, for engage our employees and the public on the city manager recruitment process. Uh, I have worked with ELT as well as, um, our hired recruiter, Heather Gantz of Novak Consulting Group, uh, to put together a survey. And so what we're doing tonight is giving you one last opportunity to provide feedback on the survey before, um, we release it out to the public and then also letting the community know that this is coming down the pike so they can, um, expect it and hopefully, um, provide us feedback on the city manager position. So, um, there's a number of questions in the survey. Uh, it starts off with asking people basically, um, uh, what area of Bothell, um, they are engaged with the city government? Whether they work here, own a business here, um, advocate with a nonprofit here or, or other options? And then if we don't have, um, what, um, if we don't have an identifier that's listed, uh, for them, they can always choose other. And that's true with any of these questions moving forward. Uh, there's always another option in, in a way for people to provide input if we haven't provided them options that make sense. The second question is about traits and quali, qualities and characteristics that folks are looking for in a city manager. And that's followed by a number of options that include a series of traits and also an, another option if, if we don't have something on there. Although there's a lot of, lot of options, so I, I have a problem seeing that, um, there, there won't be something up there for people to choose. Um, the third question is about experience, background and knowledge, um, for the city manager position? What folks are looking for in that regard? Um, and then the fourth question is on, uh, more about, um, organizational leadership and direction specific, um, uh, qualities related to that, that, uh, folks, um, feel like are necessary within the city manager. And then there will also be o, 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 obviously another option with this question as well. And then, um, the last set of questions are more about the future of Bothell and what people think are important. You see a question here on the three most pressing issues facing the city of Bothell. Um, and then some open ended questions, what advice people would give the city council in, uh, obtaining the next city manager, uh, where people would like to see Bothell in the next 10 years? And then, um, uh, sorry, um, anything else that people would like to add? And then finally, a question about communication, um, and how people would like to receive information and communication about the recruitment process between now and the end of the year. And so, um, you've seen this before, um, it, it's been sent out to you. Um, if you have any questions or concerns or, uh, feedback about it, it would be great. Um, we plan to get this out early next week. Uh, it will be on all of our social media outlets, um, all of our listservs. It will be sent to all of our listservs and, and, and interest groups and things that the city has gathered. Uh, we're also, um, discussing how we can engage community partners, um, to encourage folks that are connected with them such, um, to fill out the survey, folks like the school district, um, maybe the University of Washington, Bothell, Cascadia, things of that nature. Um, so we're going to get it out to as many places as possible and highly encourage people to do this. I also have a little bit of a homework assignment for you. Our recruiter is going to be here at the study session next week on May 11th. Um, it'll be her opportunity to meet with you and sort of officially kick off the recruitment process. She'll spend about 60 minutes, 60 to 90 minutes with you talking about the recruitment process and, and how it's, it's going to work over the next, um, four or five months. Um, and what your role will be in it and, and what information she'll need for you and all those sorts of things. Um, so one thing she asked me, um, is if there were individuals, groups or, um, um, any other entity that you thought you wanted to send a personal invite to, to, to fill out the survey? And so she'll be here next week and if you want to take time to think about that and, um, provide us, um, some responses to do that, we can certainly send, uh, personal invitations out to, um, to people that we, um, really are hoping to, or groups that we're really hoping to fill out the survey. With that, is there any questions or feedbacks, uh, feedback about, about the survey? Any changes anybody would like to see?
Deputy Mayor Zorance?
Well, I, I don't, I'm not trying to toot my own horn, but, uh, back in my college days, writing assessments was my jam and, and, um, maybe firstborns are great interrogators. I don't know. But when we got this email, it looked really comprehensive. I couldn't see any way to tweak it. Um, you really put some good thought into it. My, I guess my only thought was, um, my, my gut was when you were, uh, priorities, what were, what, what was the item? It said something about, uh, what are your 10 top, um, uh?
Maybe, wow.
Yeah, that could be, or maybe it was, what are your, yeah, I thought, oh my goodness, that's so many choices. That's overwhelming. Um, but, but what, what do you get, what do you do to make that simpler? I don't know what you do except, you know, that, just to toss out an idea, maybe in that, you know, let's put maybe in italics. Uh, if it's, if it's really, if it's really all over the place, maybe just pick and then cull from there later on in the survey. Um, but, um, it, it looked really good and comprehensive. I really appreciated the thought that went into this.
I will, I will share, I'll share that feedback with the consultant. That was, uh, a concern. Actually, this is, there are a lot less options in all these questions than there were a couple of weeks ago because that was a concern raised by the ELT too. So we, we have taken a stab at consolidating as best as we could. Uh, but I'll bring up this specific question with the consultant and see if there's anything else.
Yeah, there's.
Any, any better way to, to ask it or if we can, we can reduce the amount of choices? Because I, I can understand that could be overwhelming or, or folks could, you know, just a lot of options.
Yeah, I don't know if I, I really want to push that initially because you want to make sure everybody has something that really matters to them. Uh, uh, the hazard is you, it's, you're going to get a lot of answers that, that if you were to choose the top 10, it might be more difficult, except to maybe take the top 20 from everybody and then, wow, no, not 20, 15, and then, um, narrow it down from there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd really hesitate to do any more editing on it as it stands right now. But really good, really good work. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. Um, I did do this survey and one of the things I kind of wondered, I'm not a person that, you know, designs surveys, but when I was asked to do three choices in some of those categories, I felt like, well, wait a minute, I have, I have more than three choices. Why do I only get three? And then my other point was if you have, um, 10 choices or five choices or three, should you have a priority? So you'll rank them?
That's, that's a definite, definite possibility. I, I will, I will ask about that for sure.
I just think that, you know, sometimes you say, okay, here's 10, but number one would be, number two would be, maybe I would like to rank them.
Okay. Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Thompson?
Mayor, um, I just had one question on here. Um, under the three most pressing issues facing the city of Bothell, um, there's one bullet point for access to alternative modes of transportation and there's another one for bike route access and safety.
Yeah.
Those kind of seem like they could be one.
Okay. That's, uh, that's interesting because, um, I think we did have one at one time and somebody said, actually, there are multiple issues under that that, that could be asked about. Um, but, but I'll, I'll bring, I'll, I'll, I'll pass that feedback along. Um, I had that, I said, I had that thought as well.
I'm open to the idea that my opinion may not be in the majority. So.
All right. It looks quite complete to me, uh, myself. So thanks for all the work that you've been doing on this and, uh, we look forward to getting it out and getting input back.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right, on to our next item. Looks like, uh, council committee reports. Does anyone have one they'd like to make today? Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, um, kind of almost following up on what Chair Beldici said earlier today. There's a coalition, um, for finding essentially those distressed properties she mentioned with the one tenth of 1% county sales tax, um, going toward housing. And, um, I'm on that and we had a meeting, uh, shortly after our last meeting. Um, and we're essentially, uh, you know, all the northern cities trying to figure out what that looks like and plan for that. And there's not a ton of strategy around it yet or anything to report on. Um, I just wanted to get, to let you know that I was part of that.
All right. Thank you. All right. Not seeing anything else. A visitor comment. I don't believe anyone signed up for a visitor comment.
Uh, no, Mayor, that's right. I did not receive any requests for written, uh, any written comment and no request for live comment tonight. I do have one written comment, um, in relation to the public hearing. So I'll mention that at that time.
All right. Uh, is there anyone in the attendees that may want to speak? Give them one opportunity.
I don't see anyone from the public in the attendee list. It looks like it's all staff tonight.
All right. Very well. Uh, so on to the next item, consent agenda. Councilmember Agnew?
I move we pass a consent agenda as written.
Councilmember Thompson?
I second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to pass the consenta, content agenda as presented with the second by Councilmember Thompson. Any discussion on the item? All right. Seeing none. City clerk?
They say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zorance?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Duher?
Yes.
And Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see, we're moving along here. Uh, all right, well, let's take a five minute break and then we will come back with AB 21 dash 066, a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution approving the six-year transportation improvement program. All right. So we'll be back, let's come back at, uh, 7:30. We are back from break, and we are, let's see, on to AB 21-066, a public hearing to consider adoption of resolution approving the 2022-2027 six-year transportation improvement program. So I'll now open the public hearing, and I will turn it over to Transportation Planner Sherman Gong. Take it away.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Olson and council members.
Sherman, I apologize. Mayor Olson, I was not paying attention. Did you open the public meeting? My apologies.
I did, sir. Yes, I did.
Okay. Well, good evening. I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about the six-year transportation improvement program for 2022-2027, refer to that as the TIP from here on. And the goals of the presentation are to briefly go over our TIP process and basically to discuss any changes to the TIP, which is basically limited to updates that address changes for completed projects and/or adds new projects with opportunities to apply for grants that weren't, the city weren't, was not aware of last year. Go ahead and share my screen. This, I'm not sure how to get rid of this. Okay, so basically, in general, the TIP is just a subset of our capital facilities plan, the CFP. And therefore, the two processes are somewhat redundant, and the transportation projects are actually included in both. However, we need to update and adopt our TIP annually as required by state law. And many grant agencies actually require capital transportation projects to be listed on the TIP to be eligible for funding. Okay. Okay. Every two years, every two years, the city staff goes through a CFP process to develop our capital facility plan that includes the transportation projects, as I mentioned before. This year, the TIP does not coincide with that CFP update. And so projects that are listed in the TIP is based on just updating the transportation program to match the capital facilities plan that was adopted last fall to be more accurate. This public hearing represents the public process for the TIP this year. And most projects that are listed in this TIP have already gone through a similar public process with the CFP process that we conducted last year to identify any projects and new programs. In general, staff recommendations on which projects to include in the TIP come from programs that identified through the comprehensive plan or that our top 10 congestion list or identified through other transportation programs such as our paving, sidewalk, bridge, or safety programs. Projects that also get recommended have been, are projects that have been already started or have obtained grant funds for initial phases and need to continue. Projects that provide a seed or match funding for projects that are, the city may want to apply for grants in the near future. And that the city's dollars will go farther if they're leveraged to obtain as many grants as possible by doing so. The selection of projects for the TIP or the CFP also considers such things as whether or not the projects are competitive for grants, projects are design-ready, timing of the projects that are overlapping other infrastructure needs, and are maybe a previous commitment or an expectation that was already considered before. So the projects that we completed and two projects that were completed and taken off the TIP from last year include the 228th Street pavement preservation project, which is underway right now. And the Wannita-Woodenville Way pavement preservation project that has also just started this week, I believe. And the two new projects that were added to the TIP are the Northeast 160th Street Overlay Project, which is a new grant opportunity that we received. And we're also bringing back the Adaptive Signal Control System Phase One program, which is a result of getting extra grant funding available for the project to continue a five-year monitoring program for that project, because we also actually have the Adaptive Signal Phase Two on the TIP this year as well. So our next steps are to submit this planned six-year tip to the state after council adopts this and approves it. We may be coming back in this fall or winter with potential TIP amendments due to the potential new administration funding that may be made available and some more funding opportunities that we may come across this year. And then we will begin the CFP budget adoption process in 2022 for the next cycle and prepare the 2023-2028 six-year tip, also beginning of 2022 next year or close to for adoption by June as required by the law. That's all I have for my presentation. If you guys have any questions for me, glad to answer those for you if I can.
Deputy Mayor Zorins?
I feel like I should, you know, warm up here, so my apologies, Sherman. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have a couple of questions. One, I thought I saw some discussion on, and my apologies, because I've gone through the agenda bill a few times, and I'm like, where did I see that? I thought I saw some mention of tracking some slide-prone streets.
Tracking some, what, I'm sorry.
Looking for slide, you know, some slides separating in streets. I thought I saw some mentioning of monitoring that.
You mean like land, like?
Like landslide, yeah. Like 108, where it becomes 112, up by Norway Hill, that's got some problems. And then over Holly Hills, what is that, 195th?
Yeah, I'm.
Is, I'm assuming that we're watching those and trying to figure out at what point we have to address those.
That's good. I'm not, I'm not sure about that, how to answer that.
Okay.
I'm not sure if we're, you know, I would imagine we are monitoring slides, slide activity, potential slide activity, though. And, but I don't have that. It's not a transportation project, so it's not on my tip.
It's not, yeah, at some point, it will be a transportation project. If you can't type up and down the street, I could have sworn, well, if you can't find it, I may have just been seeing things. And then, do you know if we're working to identify, I think it's on item, was it page 89 of our agenda bill? I'm thumbing through it. Sidewalk Program Tip 11, the American with Disabilities Act, pedestrian crossings, et cetera. Do you know if that's including underserved? I saw low-income housing. We have, you know, the mobile home, what is it called? Riverside Mobile Home Estates over there on East Riverside Drive that's got a transit that sits right there and no sidewalks at all on a bad curve. Do you know if that's, that's the kind of thing that we're looking for when we talk about missing sidewalks, low-income housing? Or is that a different metric?
The sidewalk and walkway program that is on our tip, project number 11, as you said, is, you know, has its kind of, has its, has its own prioritization process that was addressed at the onset. That was a pretty, pretty extensive task force, you know, public participation process. And the, the projects that they identified based on needs and whatnot are, are, you know, kind of runs on its own. This is, we include, keep, of course, the sidewalk and walkway program stays on the tip and funding is made available. And then, and then any specific projects, like, you know, you may be talking about on East Riverside Drive is, is addressed based on that task force prioritization process and identification.
Okay, so would I contact you, could you tell me, not right now, but could you tell me who to talk to to look at that? Just out of curiosity and see if that's, but actually, they have that, you know, what that inventory is?
Yeah, we could, I could give you that contact or make that, tell you who that is. It's actually our project engineer on that is Rita Hu, and she is in charge of that program, so she can.
Okay, thank you.
Give her her contact information.
Okay, okay, no, good, just as long as I have a name. And then also, just a couple of questions left on page 98 of our agenda packet. It's item number 33, where it's talking about connecting 120th Avenue Northeast and 124th Avenue Northeast. It's not, it's not a project that we're pursuing. It's just something that's, that we're looking at. Is that cross, that's, oh, it's an overpass. We're talking about constructing an overpass for that.
Oh, that project, yeah, that, that's a needs project that's, yeah, that would be more coordinated with Woodenville and trying to, yeah, that project's been around for a while, but it's, yeah, I'm not sure what the current status of it is. It's just that it's something that has been talked about to, you know, provide that connection better, that's, that's, besides just the bridge on 135.
Right, right. Yeah, a lot of, and it's going over the slough as well, right?
Yeah, it's a pretty significant crossing.
Yeah, it's complicated, but a needful one. I can see why, why people are watching that. And then a couple of other things on items number 35 and 36, where we're talking about sidewalk replacement on 102nd and a pedestrian bridge over Sammamish River. What is the timeframe that you think that we'd be looking at that realistically? Are we looking at 10 years down the road, maybe, where that, these might become a reality? What do you think? Best guess?
I'm probably gonna have to defer that, I'll defer that to Steve Morikawa to answer that. He probably has a better grip on, on the timing of these projects than I do.
Okay, all right. But, but these, these are just things that we're just, we have queued up for when we can.
Yeah, they're definitely, it's definitely a long-term project for a bridge replacement, just for, from a funding standpoint, in my opinion. So it's a 10 years, definitely, you know, that's, that sounds reasonable to me for that project.
Yeah, I just know that cyclists have a really hard time navigating that all the way in through downtown. Is it what, to, what's, what's our, is it 185th is our next transit street that goes east-west? And then I know trying to navigate around Wayne and get down to the Sammamish River, if you're coming down, you know, past Valhalla is a little dicey, too. And this looks like, just eyeballing it from the description, it looks like it's, it's addressing that awkwardness there, unless if I'm misunderstanding that.
Steve, did you want to talk about the timing thing real quick before I answer those questions?
Yeah, so Project 35, the bridge over the Sammamish River, actually came in during one of our public outreach a couple of CFPs ago, and we vetted it out internally and thought it was a good idea. Like any other project, it's, it's just a funding that's very difficult and the priority.
Right.
That more important than the next project. The same thing with the sidewalk on 102nd. We understand the seniors are there and the sidewalk's in bad shape. We have limited amount of sidewalk money. The levy money has been prioritized, like Sherman said, by our stakeholder group, and most of that money is to fill in gaps where there is no sidewalk for kids, primarily near schools. And, you know, they came up with a five-tier list in our nine-year Safe Streets and Sidewalk Levy. We can probably hit the first tier. We can't hit the other three. But we're just really strapped in terms of prioritization. But the good thing about keeping a transportation needs list is that we don't forget about these things. And when there's opportunities, as an example, when we started talking about that transit turnaround under the interchange I-45 and 522, this is where that bridge was projected to be, somewhere at the end of Brickyard Road. That came part of the discussion, so it's an opportunity for us to show that we have a need and perhaps get some sort of funding that might allow us to do it. Other than that, it has to kind of go in our queue, and with our normal funding, like Sherman said, it's probably far out if we can find funds for it at all at this point.
Okay. Well, I, a couple of things. One, I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of this list and how well it's thought out and the care that's being taken that things don't get dropped through the cracks. And, and I am not going to tell you how to prioritize, because you know the constraints that we have to work with. And every city has, I hear most cities complain about sidewalks. And I think the people of Bothell will have to, you know, once this levy has run its course, we're gonna have to ask that, ourselves that question again about investing in more sidewalks. The last thing is, thank you for this presentation, and neither of you can retire for the next 20 to 30 years. You're our brain trust on this, so keep doing what you're doing, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Duher?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Steve and Sherman. So I did want to highlight that the state put a whole bunch of more money into the Safe Streets and Sidewalks program. So I'm hoping that we have a bunch of projects queued up and ready to go to ask for grants. And so you knew about it. Oh, good. So we're ready to go, right?
We're going after those grants right now. We're already definitely chasing those down as we speak.
Awesome. And, and when does our Safe Streets and Sidewalks levy end? Can you remind me?
I think we have another.
Four years?
Four or five?
End of 2025, I believe.
Yeah.
So let's get to work on, on those connections. And then I had one question, as I was looking at the map, number six, and I, I can't toggle, so I have to remember my comments, but it looked like number six was outside the city limits. And I just wanted to ask how that works and maybe for some more specifics. I just remember it was project number six.
That project is a pretty, it is outside of the city limits, but it is a significant link and connection for us that, that connects to 35th, which is in the city limits. So we, we ended up taking care of that project as one of our projects with, even though that the Homish County is, is also partially funding that, I'm sure that, and I'm pretty sure that that's how that one works. And we're, we're actually managing that.
Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that. So we went, we partnered with. Yeah, I can add a little bit more to that. So we went, we partnered with Snohomish County and went after a grant because that corridor is very important to us as well, especially since we never did punch 39 through straight. So that becomes our arterial. About a quarter of the length, primarily the intersection at 35th is within the city of Bothell and the rest of it's in Snohomish County. So we're basically paying one quarter of their local match required and they're paying three quarters of it. But we have agreed to lead the project. In fact, we're trying to push it along because it's fairly important to us. Because like Sherman said, it's right on our border and it affects all our traffic in that area.
So one more question, if you don't mind. So how are, how do we prioritize? Is it just by funding opportunity? Or how do we decide which projects get our attention and money?
Well, as I kind of mentioned earlier, that was, you know, again, it's, it's, the projects that we list are, are those that have already either started, you know, like projects that we have already started and we're just continuing. That's one, one reason. Another is projects that are, are seeded or matching, that we have a good opportunity to create a project that will, again, lead into more funds and more grants if we, if we have that opportunity. The other projects are, depending on like how they are graded, for example, and who gets selected, they're very, there's a big, pretty, it's a pretty competitive process. And we feel that for some reason, maybe there's a, a good bikes, bike connection, or there's good pedestrian connection, transit, maybe there's a partner or something, somebody involved that we can also, you know, bring into that grant, an application. That might be a reason why we chose that project over something else. Other reasons are like, maybe, I mentioned where, that the project is design-ready. It was, it was built, a grant, we had obtained a grant for starting that project, and now it's just ready for construction. So now we're chasing construction grant money. Different phases, right? There's right away phase, there's construction phase, and then there's a design and planning potential phases. So a lot of those overlapping infrastructures, needs, and then maybe there's potential commitments that we have, we have already kind of investigated and evaluated that was based on something that either, maybe even council brought up, you know, a project, something that needed to be improved. And we kind of, kind of went with those, those kind of projects that just need to be addressed. And, and, and if the opportunity is there, and we feel like we can compete against, you know, we're not going to get all of the money. So we want to make sure we're not competing against ourself even, you know, for that matter. And those are some of the reasons why they get chosen.
And I'm probably gonna steal Councilmember Thompson's thunder, but I have a question, so I'm just gonna ask it. So we did, we recently did the bike plan. So are we prioritizing bike connections to make complete commutes? And the same with sidewalks, right? Are we, are we giving those, do we have an actual scoring system? Is it, or is it just kind of like a gut kind of?
Yeah, I, I can tell you for the bike plan that we're, we're trying to, what we will be bringing to you this year, and, you know, for, as a final, we're working on that to complete right now. And, you know, just to have it in a bike plan and adopted in our, ultimately in our comprehensive plan later in the year after we approve it, then we will amend it to the comprehensive plan. That allows it, that allows any projects that we identify in the bike plan itself to be eligible for funding. And, and I will for sure guarantee, I guarantee you in my time remaining here at the city, that I will be chasing those grant funds every year and looking out for those because I've put so much time into developing this bike plan.
Well, I'm glad to hear it because I happen to believe that if certain legislation passes in the next year or two, there will be a lot more money going towards active transportation projects. And I think the, the more prepared we are, ready to go, the better our chances are of, of getting that money and moving the active transportation network in the city of Bothell forward. So I appreciate all your efforts toward that end. And I'm an e-bike owner, so I, I want places to bike, so.
Absolutely. I'm ready, I'm ready to, ready to go on one of those too.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you. And I appreciate the very comprehensive list that we have before us. Very many important projects here that we all have something that we really care about. And one of the things I have to bring up is number 37, which is a downtown parking study. And it's in Phase Two. So I wonder kind of what your planning is as we move forward?
That's a good question. I'm not quite sure where we are on that. I, I know we've, you know, kind of started, so we've, in my time here at the city, I've, we've looked at the downtown parking situation, you know, a couple times at least. And this current effort is not being led by Jamal Mahmood, who's our, one of our traffic engineers. So I'm not, I'm not real familiar, I'm not real up to speed on where he is on, on that. Maybe, I don't know, Steve, do you have a better idea of where that is?
Yeah, I think that parking plan got on this needs list because it's identified in our downtown plan that was adopted back in 2009. We kind of did a first phase, and I think community development led that phase. And we got, got a little bit ways, but like you know, as we get busier and busier in downtown, there's been discussion about how do you manage parking? How do you provide more parking? Do you charge for parking? Not because you're gonna make money, but you're gonna get people cycling through so you can have a two-hour space and it, you know. So periodically, we do have discussions about this, especially when issues come up on, I think the most recent one was downtown near City Hall. We had a lot of people parking for a long period of time. And then the parking wasn't becoming two-hour parking that services retail and everything. It was becoming more like an extra parking space. We have not had the resources to do that study. We still anticipate that at some point, there will be a tipping point where we will have to do that study. We can look at that two ways. The, the bad way is it's a parking study and parking is hard to find. The other way is the downtown's been very successful and a lot of people are trying to come there. So we do recognize that. We have not, we have not come up with the resources. And I don't think it has been high enough a priority for us to pull the trigger on that second study yet.
So I do appreciate that. The more apartments that we build and the more that, in our downtown area, the parking for, let's see, I wanna say, for each apartment that is built, there's a certain number of cars that is recognized, correct, for each apartment? And I think that's the real key to this is to say, how many, how many of those apartments need to have one stall or two stalls? Isn't that part of this as well? So we're be, we're sure that as we build more and more, we make sure.
So this is more probably, yeah, this is probably more a street parking management plan. I think what you're talking about more is the land use and the requirements for development.
Yes.
And I think community development does go through that periodically. And, you know, as an example, in the Canyon Park Subarea Plan, they went through the whole thing as well. It really is a difficult analysis because what you're trying to do is provide sufficient for today's needs, but you're trying to encourage people to use other means like transit. And you try to limit parking, you don't want to limit parking too much. So it, it's, yeah. So I think what you're talking about, Councilmember, is more the development regulations and the land use stuff that community development does day-to-day. And that's probably something that will come up again in our, in the next year or two when we start the comprehensive plan update.
Excellent. Thank you. I, I think that's really important.
It is.
Not seeing any more questions. I believe we can move over to our city clerk. I believe we had a public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we did. I received one written comment from Pat Pierce, and it was regarding the Transportation Improvement Program and an accident that occurred at her home. Other than that, we had no other request to speak this evening. And I don't see that we have any members of the public in the attendee group tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Agnew?
I would then move that we adopt the proposed resolution approving the 2022 to 2027 six-year Transportation Improvement Program.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to adopt the proposed resolution approving the 2022, 2027 six-year Transportation Improvement Program with a second by Deputy Mayor Zornz. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. City clerk?
Okay, please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollitt?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Duer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you, Sherman, and thank you, Steve. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
On to AB 21-067, a consideration of approval of lease of storage space for confiscated vehicles. And I believe we will have Captain Mike Johnson to present on this item. There we are.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, so far, so good. Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Council Members. Tonight, Captain Johnson and I would like to provide our presentation for Agenda Bill 2167. The purpose of this Agenda Bill is for you to consider for approval, a lease storage space for confiscated and evidentiary vehicles. Tonight, Captain Mike Johnson, as stated earlier, will be presenting. Captain Mike Johnson has been working on this project for nearly three years. At the end of this presentation, we'll both be available to answer your questions, I'm hoping. And with that, I'd like to introduce Captain Mike Johnson.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Members of the Council. Hopefully, everybody can hear me okay. I'm gonna turn my camera off so I'm not using up my bandwidth when I share a screen for a presentation. Hopefully, everybody's seeing the screen. There we go. Tom, thanks for the thumbs up. Appreciate that. We're here tonight to address an ongoing issue with vehicle storage. Due to circumstances and challenges outside of our control, the police department is currently working to acquire additional space for long-term storage of vehicles we have seized or that we're maintaining as evidence. Police Department has a need to store vehicles for extended periods of time for a variety of reasons. Some are seized after being involved in felony narcotics trafficking. Some have been used in various felony crimes, including homicides or sheer sexual assaults, or serious injury collisions. And some have been seized after being used in the commission of certain felony crimes. Sometime around 2009 or 2010, the police department matched out our ability to store these vehicles on-site after prosecutors requested we maintain possession of a vehicle that was involved in a homicide and two other vehicles that were involved in a fatality collision. Thankfully for us, our Public Works Department graciously offered some space in the Shop 1 facility located off Brickyard Road. This facility allows us to store up to 12 vehicles. However, the site is not secure and has been burglarized on multiple occasions, most recently in April of 2021. To maintain the quality of vehicles we are currently storing, or the quantity of vehicles we're currently storing, some of these cars have been stored within the secured motor court of the department. This parking is intended for the secure parking of our patrol vehicles and those evidentiary vehicles waiting to be processed. Storing these vehicles at the department is not really a long-term option. Shop 1 was originally a temporary arrangement while we located a different suitable option. More than 10 years and many, many cars later, there now is a pressing need to relocate these vehicles. Washington State Department of Transportation is acquiring the land Shop 1 sits on and will be demolishing the building. And while they will most likely be constructing some sort of replacement structure, the footprint will most likely be smaller and will not accommodate the vehicle storage. A partial solution has been created by securing a small portion of the City Hall parking garage in order to accommodate up to 10 vehicles. This area will be used for vehicles awaiting seizure hearings. However, these vehicles have to be drivable due to the challenges of getting tow trucks into the area. Additional facilities, oh, additionally, facilities needs to maintain access to this area as there is an electrical infrastructure. So the area is not really considered secured for our evidentiary purposes. Over the past three years, the police department has been looking for leased space options that might best fit our needs. We have been assisted in our search by the Economic Development Manager, Jeanie Ash, who's been researching different options. We've reviewed more than 20 listings and conducted site visits at at least six different facilities. We have narrowed our search to a warehouse facility in Woodinville. Although not in the city limits, the space is within a few blocks of our eastern boundary and is about a six-to-seven minute drive from the police station. This site can accommodate as many as 20 vehicles and can be alarmed and camered to increase security. There are no windows and only three doors plus a large roll-up. The site is also temperature-controlled. And this is actually quite important, is there are times when we are required by the court to give a vehicle back. And when we do, we're required to give it back in the condition in which we received it. This has caused the police department to have to actually detail a few cars before we give them back to community members. The property owner at the facility that's listed on this slide has offered us a three-year lease at a cost of approximately $88,000 per year. And in my research, this appears to be well within the market rate for this type of property. We've put a lot of time and effort into meeting our storage needs, and this is the best, most cost-effective solution we could come up with. And while this is not funded in our current budget, I'm aware that Chief Suwerlich has been working with the City Finance Director regarding how we can manage this lease. Chief, would you like to weigh in on that?
Certainly. Thank you, Mike. Currently, we're in a situation where we have open positions within the agency. And funding for this can be handled internally with my cost savings from open positions. I've been working with Finance Director Bothwell on this. And I don't know what the future looks like. Bottom line is, this is well within the cost of one FTE position. If need be, I could keep this open, the duration of the lease. Ideally, I would propose if the city's finances start springing back, that we'd ask for a budget amendment mid, mid-budget in December. But as it currently stands, this is something that we can adjust and pay for internally without costing the city anything other than this open position. And I'm open for questions. Captain Johnson, can you unshare the presentation, please?
Councilmember Agnew?
If, if you have a vehicle in storage and it is considered evidence, how, what impact does a break-in have? Does it ruin your chain of evidence?
It can. This most recent break-in, we had somebody, thank goodness, it wasn't one of the homicide vehicles, but they actually broke a window and gained access to one of the other vehicles that we had in storage. It has been an ongoing problem. So this particular site is far more secure, especially the fact that we don't have windows. We can have it alarmed, it's regulated. Captain Johnson did a pretty good job explaining that, you know, sometimes we have, we have to have these cars detailed. That just seems silly to give a criminal bag the car and have to detail it for them. But what we end up with is cars that are out in the weather or in a But what we end up with is cars that are out in the weather or in a environment where there's a lot of moisture, mold in the vehicles. And we have had significant problems with that. Two, one Mercedes that I can think of that was actually totaled because of that. So you're spot on. That is an excellent question.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Chief, or Mayor. Chief, I'm getting confused. Chief, so like, just a question for you. In terms of storage, the, I mean, we have a decent chunk of land around the city that's not being used. It's mostly just the fact that it has to be climate-controlled, covered. No way to use any of our surplus property for the next couple of years for this at any reasonable rate?
No. So we've checked with all the departments. This was the one location that we were able to get that was viable, and we used it way longer than I think anybody anticipated. And again, that's why we had a budget add this last June, looking at trying to secure a more permanent facility, knowing that DOT was going to be tearing down that facility in the near future. We do not have anything locally. We have checked numerous business locations. This has not been something... Here's the bottom line. It costs me money. And I've been, I've been looking and assigning Captain Johnson to look vigorously to try to figure out the best place that is close to the city. We've found a number of locations at Granite Falls and places like that where the cost is way down, but then it's cost prohibitive because of the toes that it would cost to toe from here to then that location. And so we, I feel that we've been very fortunate to find this one location just outside the city. I will say we had one structure that we had in the north end of the city that was way over budget for us. It was another $4,000, $4,500 a month for the structure, and I think it was because the ambiance came with chandeliers and everything. But yeah, that, that just wasn't gonna work cost-wise. I didn't feel good about that. I'm trying to be financially responsible here.
Now, is the quantity of cars that we need to hold on to, for whatever reason, is that going up with time? Or do we hold these for a period of time in which they cycle through and that number stays fairly consistent?
So it's really ebbing and flowing right now. I mean, we've had a high where that building's been full, and we've had another 20 vehicles in our back lot. It's some level of seizure process, and what I mean by that, waiting for search warrants and actual official seizure or evidence. And so it just kind of depends on what's going on in society.
That answers the question, though. It fluctuates with time. It's not like we're sitting on one vehicle for five years and that's growing.
Well, you know, we've had one vehicle for sure, or almost 20. And I think there are probably three or four of the other cars that have long-term storage issues. But yeah, it really depends on what we're dealing with. Ideally, we try to move them along. Some we just can't. We have to sit on.
Because that one that we've had for 20 years, you know, the lease on this works out to, you know, $4,500 or so dollars per car per year. We do that for 20 years and like, do we have to keep it for 20 years for evidence, or is it to give it back to that person?
No.
We could buy them a real nice car when they got out.
Oh, it is the requirements for maintaining evidence.
Okay.
So there is not a whole lot of wiggle room on that. It's just part of police work and chain of custody. So, yeah, I'm with you. I, trust me, I'm doing the math on how much it costs to keep these individual cars around. And so that's why we're coming forward tonight. I think we have a, it's a good plan. The best plan would be something that's free. I haven't been able to find that one.
I mean, if you figure out how to find things for free, let me know, because I'd like to apply that toward other things also.
Absolutely.
But thanks, thanks for clearing that up, Chief. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Sorry for the camera issues tonight. It's making some funny things going on there. At any rate, thank you for the presentation, Chief, and Captain Johnson. I had a question around, in the storage facilities, is it single-layer storage? Meaning is it one car on a floor, or are they stacked at all on any type of lift system?
No, that, excellent question. They're one car on the floor. The lift systems are pretty spending. If I had like an actual structure that we had purchased, like it was city, citywide, then I'd probably be looking at a lift system to try to, to make that more cost-effective per square foot. I think with the current size of this particular building and the timeline on the lease, I'm pretty comfortable with, we're gonna have room to grow a little bit and kind of ebb and flow with a high watermark of, say, 30, 35 cars and a low watermark of, say, 15. So I feel pretty comfortable.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for, for looking through it, being fiscally responsible as well.
Thank you, sir.
All right, it looks like we have done our homework on this, so Councilmember Dewar.
I move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar to approve the lease with Ridgewood LLC for space rental in the amount of $88,000 annually for three years, with the second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? Seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McCollitt.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yes.
And Councilmember Agnew.
Absolutely.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation and all the hard work on this item.
Thank you very much.
On to AB 2168, a consideration of level of service standards revision for the City of Bothell Fire Department. And there I see we have our fire chief, Bruce Groome, with us.
Good evening, Mayor Olson and council members. As you, as was stated, what I'm asking here for you today is to consider updating our level of service standards. In the policy consideration, there's two, two components to this. One is, we are required by RCW 35103 to have some level of standards posted and reported on annually. We do do that now. We are in full compliance, and if you decide not to do this tonight, we are A-OK. The reason that I wanted to move this forward is I'd like to get our response standards more in line with what the industry standards have become since this was adopted by council in 2011. So the RCW, again, 35103, requires that we have some standards and that we report on them annually. It's, is, there is no specific requirements for what those standards are. You set your own standards. They just want to see that you're reporting on something, and we do that. On that, on the AB, I'm not sure what page it is, but on the second page, as you're flipping through it, there's a, we included what that response time is, reporting has been the last four years. This is in our annual report. So every year, we come up with a four-year blog of what we're doing. We, we, we report on all our numbers. So that's not a problem. But what, what I, what I'd like to point out is these, what we are reporting on, since it was implemented in 2011, the industry standards have kind of changed a little bit, and we're trying to keep up to date with what the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, there's the NFPA 1710 is kind of what we work with for career fire departments as far as response standards. And with the CPSC, the Center for Public Safety Excellence, those are the folks that do the international fire accreditation. Both of those organizations have identified different matrix that they're looking for, for response times for fire departments. And that's what I'd really like to do, is get more in line with those. So in the future, I would, I would love to consider taking a run at accreditation. And to do that, we'd have to be more in line with what they're looking for. So this would help us get, get to those standards. Then just, if you're looking through numbers on that page, I think that's on the third page of the report, is really what might be helpful for you to look at in the discussion. It, it details what our current reporting is, and then it has the revised reports. So the biggest difference is, in our current reporting, we actually report, we have a arrival of a first emergency vehicle at scene. So it's both fire and EMS. It's just, it's all calls, the first vehicle that shows up. And that's not a component that anybody really follows anymore. Everything is broken into fire or EMS. There's two components, and it's not just fire. It's like fire and rescue. Anything, you pretty much have to get bunker gear on, right? It takes you longer to get out the door is one component. Then EMS, where you have a quick response and folks go quickly, that's another response. So they've kind of separated those out, and we, I'd like to get more in tune with those. If you're looking at that and you're paying attention, the one thing, a question that would come up, and I understand this, it's, it's, it's kind of hard to wrap around, is if you look at our, our current goals, let's take EMS for instance. Right now, our goal is to respond to EMS calls within seven minutes, okay? And right now, the last in 2020, we were doing that in eight minutes, 33 seconds. So we're about a minute and 30 over our, our benchmark. Now, the benchmarks are what we're trying to get to, right? That's not, that's kind of the gold standard. That's, that's, you know, we're always trying to get there. So the fact that we're off a little bit is not a huge deal. But then when you look at what I'm asking to change to is six minutes. I'm dropping that response time by a full minute. So if you look at the two reports, you go from a minute 30 to two minutes and 30 out of compliance. And that's where I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that. While that is, 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 is something to pay attention to, it's not like you're running a mile and the coach says, "I want a seven-minute mile," and you're running an 8:30 mile. And then he says, "I want you to run a six-minute mile," and you still run an 8:30 mile. It's just, it's not quite the same. What it is, is year to year, we want to get closer to that benchmark. We want to get better. We want to figure out ways to get that number down and to get closer to that. So it's not necessarily that, that total difference between the delta between the 8:30 and the six minutes. It's how far can we close that gap and get down to it? These standards are, like I say, industry standards for, for all cities, Seattle, big cities, small cities. So we have probably more challenges than others, you know, bigger cities who may have more resources or fire departments or stations closer together to make this. But to be in line with the industry standards and accreditation, I think it's important that we start to follow these metrics. And also, it will enable us to compare ourselves to surrounding departments, because right now, we're the only ones that I know of that follow this set of metrics for reporting. So it's hard when you're looking at Kirkland or, or Woodinville or Bellevue, you know, what do you, what you ask, you know, what are your response times? What are you doing? We really can't do that right now because we're not comparing the same numbers. So this would help us get more in line with that as well. And I think that's all I got on that. I'd happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, Chief, thank you for answering those questions because I used my little pink highlighter. That's exactly what caught my attention because I was looking at, you know, on the, on page 116, it looks like the, our, we're very, very consistent with some improvements, but there's some ebb and flow. And then I looked over here at your benchmark, and I thought, oh, my word, that's so ambitious. It just, you know, how doable is it? So my, I guess my question for you is, is that, one, it's certification that, that you're aiming for. And then over time, as you're looking at that as, as, at it as industry standards, does it become an indicator on whether or not you want to do something like, say, build another fire station?
Absolutely. It definitely does. Yeah, yeah. You know, some of these numbers, I couldn't tell you how they've come up with them, like the four-minute response. It has to do with, you know, chain of survival, cardiac survival rate and fires, and, you know, getting to the fires and incipient phases and things like that. And, and yes, at some point, it's gonna be a while probably, but if me or my predecessor would be likely be coming to council and saying, hey, we cannot get any better. Our times are getting worse, and it's because of our travel time, right? The city's just so big, there's so many people, we need to do something. We need to figure out a way to cut the travel time down, which would then, at that point, bring in the, probably the fire station discussion. Yeah, you're right.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for anticipating questions, too. That was a big help.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I struggle with this a little bit because I guess you kind of answered my question. The way that you make it happen is a fire station. We just passed a levy. So the idea of building another fire station sends cold, cold water through my veins. I, yeah, it's tough. I mean, that or buy more fire engines. I guess until we have our fire stations built and we look at the times when that happens, I just don't, I don't know that I can support, support this because I feel like it's signing on to something that the end result is other than another levy that, and we just passed, what, a 25-year levy? That or, I mean, or is the end goal a fire district? I guess I just don't, I don't understand where we're going.
Well, that's a, that's a great question, honestly, and, and I have no, I can, I could tell you right now, I have no ulterior motives to try to set something up to, you know, for failure. Absolutely not. I honestly want to just get us to industry standards. Now, to do that, let's, let's talk about that. Firefighting or the fire industry is extremely expensive, very expensive. And that's one of the reasons we were looking at shared services earlier. We could do probably better with a bigger group of resources. And once that's, you know, if and then we get to that point and we start, we start looking at not just Bothell, but the surrounding area in this response area, this response times, all of a sudden, you can make a difference without adding stations. I could say, just anecdotally, with, with Woodinville, for instance, Station 31, they are practically across the street from the east Bothell boundaries. They are right there. And, and so, you know, if that was not a question, if that was just part of our response, that was Station 31, we'd be cutting our times down quite a bit already, right out of the chute. So that's, that's a whole different argument or, or thing to get into. And but it's, it's great you brought that up. It's a very valid point. This is really not to set that up, per se. It's just that, it's, it's more in lines, I'm actually really looking for, forward to accreditation, if we could do that. That's a big step. We probably have a couple of years before we could look at that. But I know police are accredited and Public Works, and, and the city seems supportive of that. And I would like to, to look at that, at least consider it. But to get anywhere near that, this is very, very important to accreditation, to have, to report on these types of metrics.
I can under, I totally understand wanting to get accreditation. I guess what I'm struggling with is, don't we already, I don't, I forget what you call it. Don't we already, in a sense, do shared services? Like whoever's closer goes, regardless if it's our, our staff or not?
Yes, absolutely. But that's part of, well, and that's, then, you know, what we're getting into is, this is, this is a very, very confusing. We're trying to work this out, is the reporting and how you pull the numbers and how you pull the data, right? If you have two different people pull the data, you get two different results. One of the things we're looking at right now is I've asked NORCOM, our dispatch agency, and they've agreed to pick up a program called N4s. It's a, it's a reporting program. And that will enable us, all of Zone One, so Bothell, all our surrounding neighbors, to get on the same page with this reporting metrics, and we can start using, we can set up the query once, and we can pull the same data all the time, and it'll help us to get that. Because right now, it just, honestly, it depends on who's pulling data. I, I have Dave Monahan, God love him, who's really good at this kind of stuff, and he can pull it. But I can get Kevin Bryson from Eastside Fire, who's just a crackerjack at it as well, and they can come up with different answers for the same stuff. Not meaning to, but just how they, they pull data. Because some of this has to do with anomalies. When you're pulling this stuff, you'll have, you'll have responses that are just out of this world. But there was something, there was a reason for it, right? The NBC didn't work, dispatch didn't catch it, something happened. So you have to pull some, you have to take some calls out. And sometimes if you miss those, those add into it and skew the data. And I know on our overall data for the, for the 6,500 calls we went on, that's pretty, that's pretty good for, for data. When you get less, when you get into fewer calls, like areas, if you're looking at that Woodinville area and say you only have 200 calls, that, that really impacts how that data is computed at the fractile percentages because you need, you need at least 400 responses to make that fractile reporting work the way it's supposed to. Under that, it could be really skewed. It could really... Under that, it could be really skewed, it, it could really mess with the numbers, so.
And I, and I saw, I mean, is, is part of the plan to find a resolution around that? That those conflict of data?
Yeah, hopefully with this, this new reporting system, we will eliminate some of that. So we'll be able to get the same data over and over again and we can start, um, maybe get, getting some of these numbers dialed in. And, and the other part, I, I got off track, I wasn't going to get to, is it's hard, we have a very difficult time on our boundaries to differentiate between, uh, you're right, it's exactly right, it's first in, closest to gets the call. And so we have a hard time, even though it's a Bothell call, uh, always getting that data and who got there first, who did respond to that call? Well, we, we know that Woodinville came in, or they responded, you know, a bunch of times, 40 times in the month to us, but we don't know if we were there first, if we came with them, if they were there by themselves, if, if, you know, they handled the call and vice versa going into there. So that, those get really squishy, uh, when you're looking at that kind of thing. And, and so that's another reason for if we didn't have the borders, we were able to eliminate that, you wouldn't have that. You, you'd know exactly who's doing what and the numbers would be better.
Well, then it feels like we're setting us up for, ourselves up for failure. If, if we're, if we're not being able to rely on the numbers we have, how can we set, um, goals?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't see it as that. And, and I guess it really comes back to that point I was saying is, is, is yes, you know, we're, we are, uh, lowering our standard or our, our benchmark, right? Which makes our current responses, uh, seem further away, well, they are further away. Um, seems counterintuitive, you'd seem you want, you'd say, hey, if you're only able to get it to eight 30, why wouldn't you want to set your benchmark closer to eight, right? So you can maybe attain these. But this is really, this is really, um, uh, giving us, uh, something to, to work towards and to show improvement on these results. And we're always trying to do that, but, um, um, I, I just, I'm really, uh, hopeful to get these set more towards the, I can keep back and coming back to the industry standards.
Do you anticipate the numbers going down once we have that additional ambul? I guess it's ambul, I don't know if that's the correct term, the additional vehicle, um, in the north end, that, that was part of the levy?
Yep, yes, I, I would, because that would give us a, a redundant factor, a, a second rig. Some of the, the problems we have on these things is if, um, uh, like station 42, it's very busy, if the aid car goes out and then the engine goes out on a subsequent call, we have nobody in that area. And if another call comes in, we pull in station, say 45, they, they'll come down, they'll get to the call, but that adds on to the response time, right? It's at least a couple, three minutes, just to, just for that rig to get down there. So that's where we start adding time. And, and so now if we have a, a second unit at station 45, we'll have a backup. So if the aid car goes out at station 45, we still have a response vehicle at station 45 to handle subsequent calls in that area. So that definitely will help the overall responses come down.
Okay, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around, if we approve this, what is it actually? What's, what's the net impact? Is it forcing us into something? And I, I just, after passing the levy, it, I, it just makes me worried that it's just down the road of spending a lot more money. Um, but maybe I'm just being overly cautious.
Yeah, you know, I get that and, and honestly, it's, it's the council decision, right? I mean, we, we, I would like you, I'd like you to set these times, but in the end, it's your decision. We, if you look at the times, you say, we're, we're, we're okay with that. You know, we're good with the eight 30 or whatever it is, you know, in the future. Um, and, and that's a discussion to have. And there's nothing wrong with that. And it's not saying that it not, not meeting a six minute response time for EMS is wrong, that's just what we're trying to do. I don't, I don't think anybody frankly makes that. I, I, I'm pretty sure there's nobody that can make that time all the time. Um, cause it's very hard, it's, it's the gold standard, right? But, um, it's really your comfort level and what you're doing. And, and I think by, um, what we can do is though, is, is try to show improvement, uh, in this area.
So by approving this, what does it do that's different than what we're doing now? I guess I don't know.
It just changes our response, it just changes how we're reporting to the state and how we report in the, in the, uh, in the annual report. That's all it does.
Oh, okay. All right, sorry for the grilling, I just really don't understand.
Well, great, that's, that's a good question. And frankly, I can see that point because, you know, and I, I have no ulterior motives, I'm not trying to set us up for failure, I'm not trying to say, hey, I want a state, you know, I know we're building two stations and I greatly appreciate that and I'm so thankful we're getting that done. Um, and I'm not trying to say, hey, we need another station right now. I'm not, I'm not even doing that. That this, that was, in fact, it even crossed my mind. But in the future, you know, we'll, we'll look at that at some point, there, there may be discussion on that. It is, it could be a long ways off or it could be never, so.
Okay, well, thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Agnew.
Uh, thanks Chief, I appreciated your, uh, report. Uh, I'm all for accreditation. Uh, you know, if we can follow NFPA and get accredited, I, I think that's a, a big, uh, bonus in our hat, there's no question about that. You know, as, as far as our response times, I don't think they're going to change it all with the two new stations since they're in the same position that the old stations were. So, so that's not going to change our response times at all. You know, and, and I think where we pick up our major response times is, uh, going to the south end. Because Kirkland's not close, Woodinville's not really close since they shut down, you know, one of their stations that was up there. Uh, what are our response times down to the south end of the city?
Uh, well, honestly, they're not great. Um, um, the, I believe in 2020, now, he, here's another, you know, instance where, uh, uh, the number of calls can skew the data. So fewer calls can make the numbers wildly different than a, a larger number. But I believe we had about, and we, well, I mean, south of the river, I'm going to take out Riverside Drive, because that is about-
We'd always go there.
Seven or 800 calls, right there. And that's a huge chunk of calls. And, but because we have the 102nd Bridge, we get there pretty quick and those are, those are a pretty good time. Um, and the freeway calls, 405 calls, we take those out because we get, we jump on the freeway. But, um, aside from that, we really had about 127 calls total in that south part of the city. Um, and of those, about 13 were fire calls. So the EMS calls, the response time, the average or the, the fractile, the 90th percent fractile is, uh, 12 minutes, 24 seconds. And the fire was 10 minutes, 29 seconds. So, um, uh, so slower, much slower than, than the rest of the city, you're right. And, um, if, just an interesting thing, if, if you haven't spent much time with the fractile reporting, see, that's one of the things that we've gone to recently. Uh, we've gone away from averages, they used to be the average, right? The average response time and averages really don't tell the story and what we're doing. So what we've gone to now is called fractile reporting and we, we are shooting for the 90th percent fractile. And, and the simplest way to think about that is, is 90 out of 100 times, we want to hit that mark. So let's say for the response time for the, uh, EMS, it's six minutes, right? 90% of the time, we want to be at six minutes for those calls. But in fractile reporting, what that could be is, the number one through 89 could be five minutes, the number 90 could be six minutes 30, your 90% fractile is 630. Because that's, that's, that's the true, the 90th out of 100 times you made that call. So it, it, um, it's a much truer, uh, indication of what you're doing, but it also, um, you could have a couple of bad calls and really screw those numbers up. So that's what I'm kind of prefacing on the, on the south end, those numbers are high, but we, we could have some outliers in there and it's, it's hard to tell. Um, and, and just so you know, uh, Councilmember Agnew, that's, that's a great question and it looks, it doesn't look great for the folks in the south, but I can, I can assure you that we have, um, the response plans in place. Part of that, what, what makes those numbers a little higher is that, um, we, we know we have a longer run and it's harder to get to for the, you know, the stations to get there. Um, and we have, uh, with dispatch, and I just checked on this today, um, in the works, so for critical incidents for, for cardiac or for, um, like a fire, for, for significant incidents, it's closest to. It's, it's, whoever's there sooner gets there and we do that, absolutely. Uh, but what we, we also do to kind of take the heat off of Kirkland and Woodinville, bond into our area, is for BLS calls that aren't ALS, they're not life threatening, but they're still maybe an emergency BLS call, we will respond to that. If we can do it, we have an eight minute window. If dispatch says you can get there in eight minutes, they'll dispatch a, a Bothell unit. If it's going to take longer, then they'll, then they'll get another unit. So that, that really adds on to our EMS response times, because now we're pulling down, say eight 42 into the south end on a BLS call, and we're getting there pretty quick, but, um, not as quick as other areas of the city, just because of the, the limited ac- access to get down to the south. That didn't mean to be so long-winded, but I had to get that fractile thing out, because that's so weird, people will have a hard time with that sometimes.
No, that, that's fine, I appreciate that. Uh, what else did I have? I thought I had something else. But I think you're doing a great job. Uh, just for everybody's information, uh, when we started EMS back in the seventies, uh, King County EMS asked all the fire departments to have their first in BLS unit to any call within three to five minutes. Seattle Fire Department is the only department that comes close to that, because they put that in their metrics when they looked at where they're putting fire stations. So when they punch in, they're going to look for another fire station, that metrics is already in there. Now, no rural fire department, municipal fire department around here can do the three to five minutes unless it's across the street. The reason they did that is the chain of survival, ventricular fibrillation. If you get to somebody that drops from ventricular fibrillation and you put shocks on him or her, and if you do that within the first seven minutes, you got a good chance of saving that life. After that, it goes down abysmally. That was the reason they put that through and that's the reason they had those standards. But thanks for the information, Chief.
Certainly.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, I had a couple of questions. It seems like there's kind of two separate things we're talking about. One is changing like the actual things that we measure and the other one is changing the times. Cause it, there, we're adding a couple of things that looks like that we don't currently track?
Correct. Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I guess, is it one or both of those that is necessary for accreditation?
Uh, both, both.
Both, okay.
So they, they look at, um, uh, dispatch times, there's three components to a response. There's dispatch, turnout and travel. And so dispatch, we really have little, limited control over, uh, we work with NORCOM, they are actually frankly awesome, they are really good with the industry standards and they're top notch. So there's not real, much problem with that. Turnout is what we really, really can get a handle on and improve. And, um, so that's the one thing, just getting from the, the time the tones go off to the time the engine starts rolling or the aid car is the turnout time. So the quicker we can do that, the better. Uh, EMS, we give them 60 seconds, fire, we give them 90 seconds, because it takes time to get your bunker gear on. Um, now that, that is, uh, that's 24 hours a day. So during the day, when you're up and about and doing things, uh, we'd expect really quick response times, but at night, it might take them a little bit longer to get out there. We're not giving them a break, we're saying it's average of 60 seconds, we want you out of the barn. So they got to hustle. Um, and then travel time is where, um, um, it's, it's four minutes for both, the, the mark is for EMS or fire, that they want that travel time. And that's where, uh, Councilmember Agnew's talking about placing stations and whatnot. And then, you know, frankly, in Bothell, we, we kind of inherited our stations, right? We have the downtown station, but then when we took over District 10 in the annexation, they just happened to have stations there. So there was real no planning on that. It just happens, the station 45 and 42 are, are on the corridor, so that's a good, that's good for them. And at some point, we may consider moving station 42, um, to a better location if, if it comes down to that. You know, I'm not planning that, but it, you know, when you look at the future. So that's, that's right. So we, we're actually changing some of what we're collecting and we are adjusting some of the times that we already are collecting.
And both of those are necessary for accreditation?
Correct. So the, the items that I've listed on there is, is the revised, the suggested ones, yes, they write out of accreditation and NFPA 1710. It's, it's, the only one that's even a little bit different is, um, the NFPA 1710, uh, uh, wants to give 80 seconds for a turnout for fire gear and I put 90 seconds, because I think that's just a little more realistic. It's, you know, it, it takes some time to get your gear on and stuff, so, um, I gave-
Especially if you got to wake up and get out of bed.
Well, yeah, and then, I don't get that, but you know what? You know, hey, make it up in the day, right? If it's going to be a 60 second average, you better get your butt out there in 15 seconds during the day to give yourself another 75 at night, whatever that is. So that's, that's kind of how it works out.
So is accreditation based on the goal number or is it based on the actual number?
Uh, um, that, well, they look at, they look at improvement as well, because they take a, a five-year average when they go through there, kind of like our reporting is. And so they look at those numbers and see what you're doing and, and they, they want to see improvement. That's what accreditation is all about, it's ongoing improvement, you're never done, you're always trying to get better. So, yeah, frankly, even if we came in with these numbers, but we showed, uh, several years of improvement, they'd be fine with that. They're, they're abs, I've been through two accreditation, well, three accreditations, and that's exactly what they're looking for. So I've never been to one, we've met, we've met the metrics, but we've shown improvement or, or we've had a reason why we couldn't do it, and then we show improvement during that, you know, that evaluation period and that's what they're looking for.
Okay. And we have to move our goals to the revised in order to be accredited?
Uh, yeah, because that's what they, they come in and they look for. I, I don't, I, I don't know, I'm not aware that they actually look at anything else, because that's just what they have in there. It's, it's really never, ever, I, I, this is the first place I've seen these, actually, the, the other departments I've worked for have pretty much followed NFPA 1710 and accreditation, so I've just been used to those. So it surprised me when we got here with these metrics. And, and it just took me this long just to get, to get my act together and I got Chief Newbold on board and he's great, so he helped me out. Finally got this in front of you, I meant to do it sooner, but, um, I apologize for that, but here we are.
So your goals have to be what we're seeing here, but your actuals just have to be improving in order to be accredited, is that the case?
Correct, it's just like the state reporting, you, you know, you have to have something on file, what you're, what you're doing, but you don't necessarily have anything, they're not tying you to anything.
That seems really weird to me. I just don't get that. Um, the, um, with the, um, upgrades that we're talking about for reporting, um, will that take some of the variance, um, that you mentioned earlier? Cause it, it kind of seems like the data we get might not be very clean.
Uh, it, it'll help in a way, part of that's just setting up the reports, you know, you have to give it, you, you give it the parameters and you say like on the, on the, uh, turnout times, right? So you, you, you would, you would, you would throw out any turnout time, you'd give it a value. Say if a turnout time is more than five minutes, you throw it out, because something was wrong. There's, there's just no five minute turnout time. And so once you set that up, and then you go to the data and you throw out the ones that are more than five and you collect everything else, you should always get those same numbers with this report, because reports just set up as a, is a, uh, I don't know, what do you call it? The query is set.
Yeah, it automatically eliminates like the certain number of fastest and the certain number of slowest, instead of just having a person going and trying to look and figure out what the outliers were.
Correct. And, and the beauty for me is, this will be set up at NORCOM and so they'll be using their data and so that any department that, that is, is buying into this, I think everybody but Redmond is, is bought into it, um, will be able to go and say, hey, I want to know what our turnout times are and boom, there you go. And now, hey, I want to see what Bellevue's doing, right? Boom, there you go. And you can see all their turnout times and they're, and they're the same, same data set. So it's, it really helps out in that. Competition is good, so.
Exactly. Um, how do we compare to our neighboring jurisdictions?
Um, you know, I haven't really done that yet, because that's part of the, that, that is a, that, that is the million dollar question. Industry standards, we have been fighting this for years. Um, uh, what is what in, in the fire? And so, again, this N4s will help us get that standardized. Believe it or not, there's a lot of departments that when they give their response times, they don't, they don't include dispatch. They, they only put turnout and travel time. They, they only put turnout and travel time. And so you might have a six-minute response time from a station and it's, it's lost a minute or more of dispatch. They just don't include it because it's not the fire thing, right? Which doesn't tell the story for me. The citizens don't care if your part was six minutes. They care you showed up at your door in six minutes. And so dispatch is a critical part of that. So I absolutely want to count all that stuff in there. And some people just don't, right? So this will help us get more towards that goal as well.
A stopped heart doesn't care. I guess the, the reason I have these questions, I just, I have similar concerns to Councilmember Doer. You know, when we talk about level of service discussions, we're talking about kind of what commitment we want to make to people that live here. And, you know, in order to meet some of these goal numbers, that would be really expensive for us to do, given kind of how far off we are right now and what we would need to do to achieve them. So like, I'm just worried about sort of the tacit commitment to something that would be utterly unaffordable for us right now.
Yeah, well, again, I, I say it's, it's completely the council's choice if they want to, if they want to get to the six minutes or they say that's what we want to get to. I'm just saying that's just an industry standard. It's the gold standard. It's the benchmark. And I can, I can guarantee you, there's nobody in this area, especially on the north corridor, that's, that's meeting that, that, that goal on a consistent basis. You mean, you, in the frac tower reporting, you may have, you know, fifty out of a hundred are meeting it, but you're going to have, you know, the, the fifty-one through ninety that aren't meeting that, right? And that's what's good your number. So it's just, I understand, I, I understand the angst on that one. But, well, I, I just said it. I just, I'm just really interested in getting, getting more in line with what the industry standards are doing.
Yeah, I have, I have no problem with the measuring things separately and measuring turnout time separately. That'll make sense. Like what you're measuring, I'm, I'm a hundred percent for. It's just really ambitious time revisions. When we're already pretty far off the ones that we have, I just, I don't understand. I, I guess, I just don't get why we would do that. Like that, like it kind of seems like we should meet our goal and, and then move.
And that's, that's kind of what we used to do years ago is, and that's what the benchmarking is about, is you know, if, if we ever got to six minutes, then they change it. They'd lower it to five minutes, right? Because you're, you're getting the benchmark, you're getting it, and we get to lower it. So it's frankly, it's something we, we may never, ever get to, but you know, that's what we're, we're trying to get to. We'd always, we always want to get to that number.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Chief, I can appreciate trying to gather more data. I'd be interested to see once it gets a little more standardized across the different jurisdictions and be able to see how we compare with the other departments and actually comparing apples to apples. Like you're saying, some just throw some numbers out and don't even count it. So you know, you, you can never have a true comparison. So, I mean, like you were mentioning, police and public works have gone through the accreditation. I think it, it really brings them up to the, the industry standards. And I mean, they're industry standards for a reason and they are the goals. And, and like you were saying, you know, if you, if those goals get met, then they just end up revising the goal so that you're continually improving. And, and that's the goal is to always improve and just keep working to be better at your craft. So. So yeah, so I, I, yeah, I, like with these, yeah, outrageously, you know, gold standard numbers, you know, never meeting them is probably what will happen. And you know, especially as traffic gets worse and, you know, calls increase. I mean, you're constantly battling that as well. So you might get better at what you're doing. You might get better equipment, better practices, but there's always that, those other factors dragging those times down that you're constantly battling against. So. So, so goes, this industry is just continually fighting and trying to improve. So I commend you on trying to improve and, and improving by just setting those standards, lofty standards, trying to meet them every day. Councilmember Agnew?
I would recommend that we approve the City of Bothell Fire Department's proposed level of service standards as presented.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
And I second that.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Agnew to approve the City of Bothell, Bothell Fire Department's proposed level of service standard as presented with a second by Councilmember McAuliffe. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just hoping to speak to the motion.
Yes.
Um, I'm content approving this and voting for this just with the understanding that those numbers are purely aspirational as was explained to us tonight. And I'm, I'm hopeful that we don't see not hitting these numbers brought forward as justification to do something else moving forward.
Councilmember Agnew?
I'm all for the accreditation process that the chief is going to try to put through with the fire department. I think that would be a huge process. It would be a huge, well, I, you know, I, I think it'll be great. I think if we can increase or decrease our response time by a minute, we're going to save lives. There's no question in my mind about that. We're going to save more lives and citizens of Bothell.
Councilmember Doer?
Um, I, I will vote to approve because of the accreditation, but I, I have to be honest. If, if you come back and say, you know, we need to spend so much more money to achieve that, I'm, I, I won't be happy about it. I, I am hoping that this will be a way to look at alternative means to increase our response times and to more accurately measure our response times. But if I hear the words new station while I'm on this council, I will blow a gasket. I just will. And I, you know, I'm concerned that this might be justification for a fire district. And I, I, I think that should be its own conversation, not justification based on these numbers. So I just want to go on the record that those are my concerns, but I'm all in favor of being better and seeking accreditation. So I will vote yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, what I really appreciated was I really want to see us get accreditation. I think that's really important. And it sounds to me like, Chief, you're headed in that direction. And that's really impressive to me. I really also appreciate that you are looking at sharing resources. So with surrounding cities and areas, that, that's a really important piece of this. And will also prevent us having to have another station if we can find, find ways to share. So thank you for your presentation.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Chief, I just want to thank you for your, your, your presentation and your informational update today. There's nothing more important in life than public safety. And while we, we try to gather data and information, we are an ever-changing community. And things in our community are going to change. We just had a presentation on, on a map, the, the map of the City of Bothell and all the growth that's taking place. And, and our city's going to change over the next five to 10 years. And so when we start talking about levels of service, we also must think about the growth that's taking place within our community. So I, I support the, the reason that you're, you're looking to be accredited. I think that it's, it's a standard that we need to set for our community to be accredited. I think the levels of service Councilmember Agnew brought up is, is a goal. The City of Seattle sounds like they're meeting that goal. We may never meet that goal, but we must try to meet the goal of level of service. And we owe that to our community. And as our community changes, we need to continue to look at it, right? If we evolve and, and we add three thousand more people in this part of our community and two thousand in that part of the community, we need to look at what's best to continue to have the best level of service. So I just wanted to thank you for, you know, all your hard work and dedication to public safety within our community. We support the fire department wholeheartedly and I, and I know you have our best interest at heart today and into the future, whatever that might bring for, for our community and ensuring that the people of Bothell are safe. So thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Doer?
Yes.
And Councilmember Agnew?
Absolutely.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chief. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Onto our final item, council conversations. Councilmember Agnew?
I, I'd just like to reach out to the citizens of Bothell and tell them that if they haven't been vaccinated, to please get vaccinated. This is one way we can get a hold of this pandemic and rampant through our nation for the last year. I know people have their, their worries about this and that and the other thing. But you know, if, if you take lisinopril for your hypertension, if you take that insulin for your diabetes, you're taking a medicine. All they're asking you to do is take another medicine. Unfortunately, it's probably going to be like a flu shot. We're going to have to get a booster every year for the rest of our lives. So be it. I mean, we can see what's happening in India right now and it's devastating. Get your vaccinations. Thank you.
Councilmember Doer?
Wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Agnew. I got mine the first day after session was over. It was super easy. I drove out to Evergreen State Fairgrounds. I didn't even have to get out of my car. It was like clockwork. And I, it was probably the, the least painful shot I've ever gotten in my life. So it's totally worth it. And I just want to get back to normal and see my friends and family. I'm tired of this and we all must be, right? Anyway, I wanted to bring up a couple of things. I wanted to make sure since we have the opportunity that we're all on board with writing some sort of letter in regards to the redistricting that Councilmember Valdutti talked about and keeping two council members. I think that is really important to have two different King County council members representing Bothell. It just gives us that much more power when there's an issue in Bothell. And they both have different strengths. And so it's helpful to have coverage by two. So at some point, if we could all, you know, raise our hands so we don't have to wait another week for staff to... I'm in favor, anybody? Okay, that's four. And then two other things. I wanted to mention the Climate Action Toolkit. I, I wanted to know, since King County has gone through the process of already producing it and because we are in one of the few cities that is not part of K-4C, I wondered if anyone else was interested in having staff take a look at it and see what, what parts of that that we could adopt. Or to get some sort of presentation on, on what that entails and if there's anything that is implementable this year or at least having a plan to implement over the next couple of years. Okay, that's, so that's more than four. And then the other thing is I had on my calendar, because I never remember stuff, that we had been told by, I think it was Director Cotterman, that the stormwater update for climate change would be half, modeling would be happening around this time. And so I just wanted to follow up with staff to make sure that that was going to come back to us. I, I, when we had that presentation, I was concerned about, about approving it because we didn't have climate change involved, involved in that decision. And I wanted to make sure that we were going to follow up on that. And so I put it in my calendar because Director Cotterman said April. So I think that's the only other thing. And then I just wanted to comment about the gentleman that was stabbed and murdered last week. We don't know all the details. We don't know for sure what happened and whether it was a hate crime. But I can tell you as an Asian American, it almost doesn't matter because we hear about Asian Americans more and more frequently being victims of violence. And so I would hope that our community could come together and support the Asian Americans in our community and show them some love and just spread love. Life is too short. That's all. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Um, yeah, I, I, I know that the community of faith is really stepping around John Wen's family in that murder. And uh, something that I hear anecdotally is, is that people who are not native to the US, who are here on, you know, work visas or maybe they haven't become citizens yet or they just, or they are citizens and they have a clear accent, that they seem to be, this is just anecdotal that I've been hearing. They seem to be more targeted for violence. And Asian Americans, yes, but, but all Asians. I am concerned about people who are not Asian American, but who are Asian, who are being targeted. And they need to know that they have every bit as protection as anyone else here in the country. So there's that. And then, yes, the shot, I have, happened to have it twice. Both times, genius, easy. I want them to be giving me my flu shot from here on out because it was painless. Now, side effects, but side effects are good. That means you still have an immune system. So don't be afraid of side, side effects. And then I was listening for, listening to the King County Health update today and they were talking about putting more pop-ups out for getting vaccinations and looking for ideas. So I am going to be doing a follow-up phone call because I think North Shore School District, District is going to be doing a pop-up. But any pop-ups that we could get going here in the Bothell and would be fabulous. So if you hear about it, let's get the news out. And there's worse shots to have than this. Y'all will be fine. Do it.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I want to point out, even though I was not involved in the chat with the chief of police, I know you were, Councilmember Zornz, and so you reported back to me. And the question that I thought was most impressive was when an Asian person asked our chief, you know, what he, he should do if he's fearful. He said, if you have a fear, you need to call us and we'll talk you through it or we'll need to be part of your solution because we want to be helpful. So I think when we, when we've talked about the, the murder of Beardsley, I think we also have to remember that some people need are, need mental health help and support. So as we look at our human service budget and where it's going to go, I'd like for all of us that are involved in that and to think about how can nonprofits also help people who have mental health crises and need to be helped before there is a problem. So that's just kind of the goal, one of the goals that I'm headed toward with our human service dollars is to find where the greatest need is of our people in our community, whether it be mental health, drugs, alcohol, or homelessness, and who could serve them best. And, and when we look at our budget, our nonprofits could do that if we can find a way to make that happen. Secondly, I want to point out something that was very interesting. It was part of the pop-up agenda tonight. So it was AB twenty-one zero six four. And that was, oh, sorry, not the pop-up agenda. It was the pop-up concession at Wayne Golf Course for sale of cycling and running apparel. I was pretty impressed when I read this about how they kind of were on the trail and, and they were there for about a year and then they became successful. And now they're in our parking lot at Wayne Golf Course. And it made me think that Jeannie Ash is really right on when she's talking about the little incubator shops that we could put other property at City Hall. And, and having businesses, small businesses who struggle to begin, be there for a year, pay a percentage of their income or profits and then flourish and end up becoming a business. So I was pretty impressed with the, the pop-up part. I wanted to bring that up and say, I hope we can see it happening at, at City Hall.
Councilmember McNeil?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I apologize for the video issues that I'm having, but to Councilmember Doer, I just want to let you know that I stand with you. We are together stronger when we stand together against any type of hate. But the hate that's going on right now needs to stop. And it's, and you have, you know, my support a hundred percent. And I hope we as a community can stand together against this type of hate specifically, but any hate. I also wanted to talk about a couple of positive things. The parks, the fields being open, people being able to get out and be active in a community, in our community is youth sports and adult sports. I think it's just amazing. I go around to other cities and I notice their, their, their fields are closed. And so I just want to give a shout out to our Parks Department for all the work and hard efforts that they're putting in to continue to keep those fields open for our community. I also want to talk about public works because it's very interesting when you do go around to other cities and then you come back into yours and you look at the, the streets and it's amazing how clean our streets are. And the acting interim city manager Um, and the acting interim city manager, um, said something to me that resonated. And that was it, it's not just about the, the clean streets, but it's about the fish and the wildlife that we help to protect. And so, um, I just want to give a big shout out for, for all the hard work and dedication through these very tough times that our city has done. And, um, it is just amazing, uh, what they've done during this tough, tough time. And, um, you know, budget cuts and things like that. We're working on very tough budgets. So we're, we're, we're standing strong together. Um, and I just wanted the, the city staff and everybody to know within the city, how much we appreciate all the hard work and dedication to these tough times.
Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there've been a lot of things brought up that I agree with tonight and I'm not going to hit on all of them because it's getting a little bit late. But, um, I just wanted to say I agree on trying to keep two King County Councilmembers in Bothell. Um, also on K4C, I thought I saw four people for both of those as well. Um, if we need somebody from council to be involved in that, I would love to. Um, the, um, and, um, Councilmember Agnew, earlier when you were talking about people getting the shot, like I was about this close to just shouting amen uncontrollably. Um, I love that. Thank you. And if, um, if anybody's still watching, um, get the vaccine for yourself. But if you don't want to get the vaccine for yourself, get the vaccine for people who can't. My kids are four and six. They can't get vaccinated. With the new variants, uh, kids younger than them are dying up in BC. Um, and those who can get the vaccine can protect those who can't. So please get vaccinated. Um, you, you kind of feel bad for a day, but it'll save lives. And I'll make that trade-off a hundred times out of a hundred.
Councilmember Doer?
You know, it's coming. Motion to adjourn.
Sounds good. Great discussion tonight, everyone.
Bye.
Good to see you. Good night.